September 3, 2024 to order. Can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Counselor Sikala.
Here.
Counselor Crisati.
Here.
Counselor Hendrickson.
Here.
Counselor Ludwig.
Here.
Counselor Mangini.
Here.
Counselor Nasuda.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Here.
Counselor Santinella.
Here.
And Counselor Ungeyer.
Here.
Ten members are present and none are absent.
Thank you. And we're moving on to appointments. Town Council appointed. A District Three Councilor vacancy exists due to the resignation of Douglas Finger, Republican. Replacement will be Jeff Russo, Republican, until 11:10, 2025.
So move.
Second. Are there any other nominations? Nominations?
Second.
All in favor of closing nominations? Opposed? Abstentions? None? Okay. Can we have roll call, please?
Counselor Sikala.
Pass. Please come back to me.
Counselor Crisati.
Pass. Please come back to me.
Counselor Hendrickson.
Four.
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Pass. Please come back to me.
Counselor Nasuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Pass and come back to me, please.
And Counselor Ungeyer.
Four.
Okay. Counselor Sikala.
Four.
Counselor Crisati.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
And Counselor Santinella.
Four.
Ten members are in favor, none are against.
Thank you very much. And I'd like to congratulate Jeff Russo. I think Marie has something prepared to explain why we made the decision we made.
Jeff comes to this council with 22 years as a Hartford police officer, and he currently serves as captain and commander of their detective bureau. He is a 15-year resident, and he has volunteered his entire life to youth athletics. Since 2019, I'm sorry, 2019, he has been the president of the Enfield Soccer Association. He's a family man. His wife, Megan, and his daughter, Ally, is here tonight. Both his daughters are students at Enfield High School. He puts family first. He aligns with us. And I believe Jeff will bring a fresh perspective to this council, and his experience and knowledge will be of value. So I welcome you tonight. Thank you for stepping up.
Thank you. Jeff, if you'd like to come forward and either say a few words first or get sworn out by Sheila, sworn in by Sheila, whichever you'd prefer. Sure? Come on up.
My wife did tell me to be brief, so I'll try.
Do what your wife says.
Not looking to give anyone any midnight meetings. I know you guys are here late very often. All right. Do you want to swear me in? Does it matter?
No, you may make your remarks first.
Haven't had the training yet. All right, I have some prepared remarks. Good evening. I am very grateful for this opportunity to serve the town. I want to first thank my family for their unwavering support. My lovely wife, Megan, has been by my side for 20 years and knows firsthand how much I love this town. Megan and my daughter, Ally, right behind me here, as mentioned. My oldest daughter is playing a high school soccer game right now. She wanted to attend. She was willing to skip the game, but it's her first game of the season. I told her to go to the game. Just make sure that Enfield wins. That's all I ask. To the Enfield Republican Town Committee, I appreciate your support and thank you for putting your faith in me. To the Town Council, thank you for selecting me as your new colleague. I appreciate the warm welcome. I'm going to guess that some of you may be a little apprehensive with selecting me as a newcomer to politics, but I can assure you that I will work very hard to give it my best effort. I promise to work together with all members of the council as best I can, everyone. I have family members that are diehard Democrats, and I have family members that are diehard Republicans. I get a regular dose of medicine that includes different views, different opinions, and different ideologies. It gives me a little bit of balance. For people that know me, I can sometimes talk a little too much. Listen, I'm not here to pontificate. I'm not here to elaborate on my opinions, but I will make myself heard. I have set a goal for myself to listen more than I speak. I aim to keep an open mind and hear all sides. To town management and the hardworking employees, I look forward to working with everyone to help move Enfield forward in a positive direction. To the citizens of the town of Enfield, I am here to serve you. I know that no one within District Three actually cast a vote to elect me, but I can assure you that I will do my best to represent you. I appreciate Doug Finger's service to the town, and I know I have some big shoes to fill. I am here to represent District Three, but I'm also here to make decisions for all of Enfield. I will graciously take your input, analyze all data, and try to make informed decisions. We won't always agree, but I know that I will always take what you have to offer for consideration. Thank you all for this opportunity. I look forward to serving this great town. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Now, if you step in front of Sheila, she'll come out and swear you in.
Do you want me to come out?
No, you're good.
You could come over here. Thank you. If you could please raise your right hand. Do you, Jeffrey Russo, solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Connecticut, and the Charter and ordinances of the town of Enfield, and that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties as a member of the Enfield Town Council to the best of your abilities to help you God or upon penalty of perjury?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So we're going to get you right into the game. You're welcome to join us up here. Do we just add Jeff to roll call now, Sheila?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, and congratulations, Jeff. Next, we're going to move into the Enfield Street sewer main break. A request for transfer of funds for the repair of the 920 Enfield Street sewer main break of $700,000 is requested. Tonight, Donald is going to give us a presentation and exactly take us through what happened and what needs to continue. Welcome, Donald. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. As it says, you know, Boston may have had the big dig, but we've had our little dig for the last two weeks or so. It has been nothing but a challenge. I mean, yeah, that was a sinkhole that you see on the left side of the picture in front of the excavator, but when you see the final product of what really happened and how big of an area we had to go in, it was quite amazing that we had, again, town-wide, local contractors had the ability to actually come forth and repair this. So just to kind of orient you, here's a town green gazebo. Here's freshwater pond. Here's the pier that goes out. So the break was where the white X is in the red circle. Now, this is where Domino's Pizza is and the donut shop on the corner. So that break was just inside of the driveway apron, probably about 15 or so, 20 feet in. Now, that line was compromised right at that X. We had a portion of it come down. It's probably about 2 feet by about 4 feet long, where the top of the pipe actually just collapsed and went down. So that leads into this manhole in the back of their parking lot next to the dumpsters. Then it goes northerly to a manhole behind Broihill. Then it cuts underneath the stream to a, there's a manhole in the basketball court. Then there's another one in the street. Then it goes down along the way. So that's sort of the 1,000-foot view. So the 30,000-foot view is here's where the collapse is, and everything that you see inside the magenta line contributes to that one manhole. So the variety of pump stations we have over on Moody, we've got Grape Brook, we've got them all over the, everything within this purple or magenta line flows into that one manhole.
I would just add, because I think it's important for the public to know, you know, all we see is above, you know, the trees, the sky all summer. We don't know what goes on below. And just so we're being conservative, as we always are, this sewer line and break represents about 50% of the buildings and residences in the town of Enfield. So think about that for a moment. A week ago Saturday, you know, 2:00 in the morning when the rains were torrential, they had just pumped out. And remember, that's collection, and then it has to pass through that area. We had an open hole. You're going to see the pictures. If that had ever erupted and bubbled up into the above ground, it would have been a devastating cataclysm of, I don't want to scare anybody, but I can't predict the multi-millions of dollars that we would have faced from the damage, the biological hazard, and God forbid, I don't know how the DEP in the state of Connecticut would look upon us if it all went into the brook and into the river. I know we were facing fines at the Water Pollution Control Center before we upgraded it of millions of dollars a day. So I'm not over-exaggerating. I want people to know that this is a dire circumstance due to the heroic efforts and the work of our staff from throughout the town, not only water pollution control, but highway, waste removal, police, Steve, everybody came to bear to work on this over that weekend to avert disaster, and they were able to stop it. So what we're going to tell you tonight, there's three phases here. This is an emergency. Under our charter, to appropriate money the way we're going to do it, without public hearings and without going out to bid, it has to be deemed an emergency, and the town attorney has done so. Mr. Wilcox concurs. So for your consideration, this is the biggest item of business tonight, because this is mandatory. The other items that will come up over at ARPA are discretionary and don't affect the life of the town. This does. So we're going to have three stages, and I'm going to tell you a couple of things. Let Donald continue, but I think it's important to know that there are three stages. We've done the first stage. He's going to tell you what that is. We potentially would be able to do two other stages or phases going forward because we are very concerned that collapse and blockage has occurred. So we don't want to spend $700,000 tonight, and then next week tell you we need another 700 right away. Because if we do it now with the contractors and the people who have been assisting us, we'll get some reduction in costs. So what you're going to hear, the first tranche is $700,000. John will tell you where it's coming from. Number two, there's a second phase. Once they get in to do cameras, he'll tell you what he thinks that phase would cost. And then the last phase, he'll explain to you. We'd like to leapfrog and do them all. I will just let you know when I'll conclude, and I think it's important to know, under the emergency provision of our charter, we are allowed to spend 1% of our expenditures. John has calculated that to be $1.6 million. We don't know what the cost of the rest of the project will be. We know that we're going to pay bills for about $700,000 tonight. Hopefully, you'll appropriate $1.6 million. That will remain in balance, so we don't have to come back with a special meeting. We'll continue. They'll go in. They'll tell us what they think if we can do the next phase, what the cost is. We'll consult with leadership in the council for you to say, green light, it's funded. Go ahead and do it. I think it's also important to know, after we just concluded the budget this year, we also had to make some unforeseen expenditures in regard to the Board of Ed and on the town side. So I think everybody would like to know here and at home, what is our fund balance? How much money do we have now, after we've expended the budget and some unforeseen money? So John tells me, as we sit here this evening, due to, and we were hopeful, and he forecasted that with our investments and the way certain things were going, we would be in a good position. So I can report to you tonight, we have in the fund balance, our rainy day fund, $20 million. Everything we're proposing tonight, we're not going to touch that. We don't have to. We always forecast. We are conservative. We've done that in all of our projects. That's why the fund balance is so strong, even after we helped and put the Board of Education right, because that affected the whole town. We've done all of our other projects. We've kept all of our promises. Even if you do these other ARPA, you're going to see, I'll address that the next phase, we have money for that. You can spend it on those projects or whatever you would like. And on this, we have money separated that John, in infrastructure and sewage, that we can spend. And I'm promising you, and I've told leadership, and we're going to do this, just like we do with the streets and the roads and sidewalks, Donald is going to touch on this. We're going to come up with a plan of, and we'll do the concurrent pass like we say we need to do on roofs, one or two of these a year, sewer mains, pump stations, and then we'll continue to look for money from the federal government. We've had some success, and we'll continue to pursue that. And then lastly, the important thing to note is that with that amount of money, with what's going to come in the next year, I think we'll only be in a more flush position. So on the sewer project and all of the ARP, oh, you caught that, Gina? We'll be flush. That's what she's alluding to. But anyway, I want you to know that we're in good financial position, even with these expenditures. We're not taking any money out of the rainy day fund, and you'll be able, in the next projects that are going to come up, I want the public to know, those are no new projects. Those are projects that you had proposed previously under ARPA that we had to scale back or not do because we were concerned with the budget. So we were prudent. We said we would come back and revisit them, so we'll come back this evening. John has made a clear line of delineation. He believes in the ARPA funds, the purpose of it was for infrastructure, for CIP, to do things that would last 50 years. Our emergency rainy day fund isn't for that. It is for the emergency we're undergoing for the sewer repair. So we're staying in our lanes. ARPA money discretionary, we have to spend it or designate it by December and spend it this year. So we have those for your consideration, and then this is the separate project on the sewer. But I wanted everybody to know, those are the two main issues we're dealing with. Now I'll let Don complete it, and then we'll have a vote on that one before we address the ARPA monies. Donald?
All right. So again, it is quite like Chris alluded to. It's well over half the town. It is a huge geographic area. And just for those who can see that, these red lines are our trunk lines that traverse the town and either wind up at a pump station or go gravity like this one through here. So one of the biggest things that we ran into with the problem is just depth of where we were working. Now, it's kind of hard to understand what you're looking at in this picture, but this right here is the bottom of a nine-foot tall trench box. You've got about 4 feet here. This is 6 feet down to the bottom of this trench box. Then the bottom of that pipe is another 3 and 1/2 feet below that. So we're in a 22-foot range trying to work. It is very claustrophobic, and it just made things a lot more difficult being at that depth. But in this picture here, this was the original part that just broke off and was gone, just gone. And all the debris, as you can see here, from their construction of the plaza and the, all the stone, all the rock, all the potato, everything in here went down the pipe. And that, believe it or not, was what, when we finally shut the flow off, that is a 36-inch pipe, so a 3-foot inside diameter pipe that is full of every conceivable thing you can possibly think of. And it was pretty much half to, at some point here, this was only about 3 inches clearance in through here, and all that stuff came through. Now, there's no possible way that all of this could have come through, through that break. I think this has been a culmination of the four breaks of the force mains since I've been here, kind of just catching up and pushing it through because a force main has all that velocity to it. It can push it into here, and the gravity can't lift this away. I think this has been a culmination of years and years of these breaks. But again, these are not small pieces. These are, you know, these are 12-inch to 16-inch pieces or blacktop. There's every conceivable construction materials. We've had manhole blocks, regular CMU blocks like the ones on the wall. We found those in here, and fortunately, we were able to retrieve all that up in the pipe. When we did reline, it was as squeaky clean as we could possibly do it. And just for sort of scale, this dumpster here is completely full with the debris, and this hoop house back here is that much full here. We pulled about 55 yards of material. Now, my calculation on that length of pipe, that we could have pulled no more than 75 yards out. So we pulled, based on the volume of that pipe, so we pulled 55 out of possible 75 yards out of there. That's how much stuff was in there in that one particular section. So after that, we started doing our bypasses, started getting our pumps and the like, and this is the big 18-inch plastic stuff, which is really neat. It's welded together on site with a heat plate. They take the two pieces. They put a heat plate between them. They cook the plastic. They smoosh it together. It cools, and it's done. And they move on. It is the real neat, real technology. It allows us to have that larger 18-inch pipe that we've had. Now, this is the actual liner that was inserted into the, into the pipe and the like. And I have a piece of it. I have some show-and-tell stuff here. So this is the piece of the liner right here, and I'll pass this along. So what you can't see here is that this trailer is kept at a balmy 20 degrees Fahrenheit to make sure that the resin inside of this, that sock right there, it doesn't start setting because it starts setting at a certain temperature. So it comes in on a refrigerated 20-degree cart. This is a giant sled that actually sticks out to, it could go out another 6 feet. It's just dirt. It's not what you think it is, Marie. So what they do is they take, they take this felt or this sock, and I'm going to show you through here. So that comes off. You can imagine this being the truck, and it comes off, and it's sitting just like this is on the screen right here. They take, they take this part and they fold it backwards, like they fold it back like this on itself. Then they cut two air holes, 6-inch air holes, one on this side, one on this side. And actually, in this picture, right behind me, there's one of the 6-inch air hoses and the other 6-inch hose. Then they pump the air through here. Then as they're pumping it through, this just keeps coming out and out and out and out and out and all the way to the other end. When they get to that point where it's popping through the manhole on the other side, they start cooking it. We put in steam at 140 degrees, and they cooked it for four hours. Now, after the four hours, this is what the end result was. And I'll pass this around. So believe it or not, that piece next to Counselor Santinella turned into that after being cooked for four hours at 140 degrees. That is why, again, they offer a 50-year warranty on that because that is hard as anything. And if you can imagine that lining, that entire inside of that pipe, when that gets pushed through, all that sock, when that gets, all gets, makes all those little corners, fills in all those little gaps like that. But that is the end result of what happens when we line a pipe, whether it's a drainage pipe or sewer pipe, whether it's 8 inches or whether it's 36. This company does up to 60-inch pipes, so hopefully, we'll never have to use them, but it's good to know that they do that. But it is pretty amazing in the end result for that. So back to the depth. Before I get in, before I get into the fast facts here, I just want to have you take a look at what we're looking for in depths and what we have to fight against. So here is Todd Mathews, our superintendent. Here's Jacob Angelo. So Todd's about 6 feet. So this entire pipe up to here was inserted into the manhole as a suction line for pumping. That is how deep that manhole goes. Now, again, it's hard to understand. You say 20 feet. You can stand outside if you have a two-story house, or even up here, you can say, okay, 20 feet down. But when you're in a confined space of 3 feet and you're down 20 feet, like several of our staff were, it's really testing everybody's ability, including the contractors and, again, all of our staff. So again, this was entirely inserted all the way down like that. And those are, again, the depths that we were working at. So to get this all under control and where we're at right now, we've had, we've endured 635-plus hours of overtime, 153 of double time. We've had that 18-inch bypass, which is the black pipe that's welded together. We've had over 800 feet. The 12-inch, we've had 1,200. We've had to run two, the MGD is million gallons, so we've had two 1-million-gallon 6-inch pumps. We've had two 4-million-gallon-a-day 12-inch pumps. We've had one 2-million-gallon day 8-inch pump to run to make sure that we were on bypass to go move all this stuff, plus 14 tankers that we had that night to bypass the station. So this is regurgitation of the same thing, but I just want to show you, this is the end product. Everybody's happy. Everybody's ready to go home. I just want to see if anybody notices this on the next page, but the, I would be remiss as a director and as a leader and as a human being to not thank so many people that have stepped up. Number one, and all joking aside, the inventor of Tums, because they put us, that product helped poor Todd and Mike Dudik a lot through the times because it was very stressful trying to make sure that we don't have any releases, like Chris said. We don't have stuff going into the brooks. We don't have stuff going into the river. Bill Dufour was amazing during my vacation, covering for me when I was allegedly not here during my vacation. Todd Mathews has been nothing but a rock star. Mike Dudik has been a longtime employee. He's our grade-three operator. Again, Adam, Travis, Tyler, John Paul, Rich, Eric, Jacob, Zach, Alex, and James, all from WPC, who just stepped up beyond anybody's comprehension here, including mine. Like I told Chris, I'm proud, and I'm just absolutely humbled as a director and as a human what those guys, how they stepped up. And we had some other folks, too, from Highway. Frank Toby has been working, he's driving, he has a tanker endorsement, so he's been doing a lot of work with the Vector and driving a tanker. Same thing with Jeremiah. Andy Rhodes has been involved in John Dubeal as well. And again, if I missed any other staff, I thank them sincerely. So they did.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to echo that. I know in talking to leadership and councilors, they've asked me to extend their deep appreciation to all of these folks, and I can't emphasize enough, it's different. Sometimes we are a little crass and say, well, they just came in and did their job. Well, you can just come in and do your job, or you can come in and kick butt and work crazy and have a remarkable result like this. So, you know, coming in and, well, we're paying them for it. That goes from 1 to 10, right? Or 1 to 100. These people put in 100, and they don't expect anything. They don't even really expect when we're out there, or the mayor or John stops by. They don't really even expect to be thanked or asked for that appreciation. They're doing their job. They're doing their work. And they have such pride to work for Enfield and work in that department. So I would like to thank them. We're thinking of something we can do a little bit more on behalf of the town to show our appreciation coming up shortly. But unbelievable heroism. And, you know, I've got to say, all of our departments, I think with municipal work, sometimes when you're not doing it, and I think our new addition, Jeff, says, well, they're municipal, they're a state worker. Well, that's as wide open as, you know, we have for anybody else in the world. There's great people who work for towns, and there's people who aren't great, and there's people in private business. But a lot of the unsung heroes, we, the other day, had a crest call-out, and for those at home, that's when we bring in our regional task force to try to save someone's life who's in crisis. And we do that, and much like this, the public looks out. It's a beautiful, sunny, wonderful September day. They don't know what happened underneath at the corner, and they don't know what happened at the house, but we saved lives in both instances because we have really dedicated and talented people in Enfield, equal and superior to anyone. I put them up against any workers in any one of our departments in the state of Connecticut. And I think you all, those who have been on the council, have seen it, and this is another example in action. So I thank them all. Donald, thank you.
Yep. So that kind of ended what Chris alluded to as like Phase 1, if you will. So, or Section 1. Now, Section 2, we're going to talk about, this goes from that manhole next to the dumpsters, behind the, behind Domino's and behind the donut shop, and it runs north to Broihill, back to that manhole. You can see the pile of dirt that we had out there. Then it goes under the brook, it's into the basketball court of this complex. Then it goes into the roadway of that complex, then goes through the housing authority and the like. We were able to get a sneak peek at this section through here, Section 2, and based upon my personal recommendation is that if they would indulge the council, I think it is imperative that we get this section lined. Because if you look, so this was up front, this was a little deeper in. The other section of pipe that you noticed, it still had some of the curls and still had some of the concrete on the side of it. These rectangular lines, if you will, is the actual mesh of the concrete. So those are 6x6. It's like when you do, sometimes they do sidewalks, you have a 6x6 mesh that you put down. That is how these are constructed. Those are constructed and put in halfway through. So a standard 36-inch pipe is about 2 and 3/4 inches thick, almost 3 in certain spots. So if these, if this is showing here, we have about an inch and a half of concrete or less on top of that and all around it. And this is that same shot, but just a little further in, down through here. And again, it is showing that degradation. It is showing the 6x6 mesh coming through. So again, my personal recommendation, we need to take a little break for, you know, a couple of days here, get things kind of organized and get back to the plant, back to our pump stations. And Todd is meeting folks on Thursday to discuss the plan, to figure out a way to how to get to get this section camered and figure out what we're doing underneath the brook, because we don't know what is exactly happening during the brook. If there is this much concrete degradation in this line, I was hopeful, and I was completely wrong, because when I looked at this section, this section here looked just like this section. And down here, it looked almost like a brand-new pipe, it was the craziest thing. I don't know what happened here, I don't know why that is so gone, but it is. So to bypass this, what we need to do is go in, put a, either a 12 or probably a 12-inch pump here, run that 18-inch over here, down through the back again, somehow get over the brook, whether it's here or around we go, we have to get past this and pump into this one. That way, if we're pumping here and that's going this way, this line will be dead, this line will be dead, this line will be dead, and we can get them cleaned and inspected. Then we have to make a decision. We already know that this has got, this, I, again, personally recommend that you do this section. Here, we have no idea because everything's underwater, it's still 12, 13 feet deep, we can't see any, we can't do anything, we can't access it just because of the amount of the volume that's going through. So that was section, this is section two up to Broihill, and section three across the brook. And again, it is, this section here is showing much more degradation to it, and it's, it's in rough shape.
At this point? Sorry. At this point, can it be lined or has it got to be replaced?
No, it's going to be lined.
It can be lined.
That's, that's the saving grace of this right now, is that it's smooth enough and there isn't really, it's, it doesn't look smooth, but again, the way that liner, you saw how that came through, that just pushes right against that stuff, and it's, it's fantastic. So this can be re-lined. The only, again, the only issue is, is getting the bypass, because this line here in purple is the Great Brook Force Main, comes down here, and this red line here is part of that whole trunk system that comes. This is gravity, this is pressure, so we would have to, again, block this off again, pump, use this as the wet well, so as the suction part of it, then pump it from here northwest and west into this area and through here. That would be the only way to do it, so we can physically shut this down without flow and see what we have for this section of pipe, because again, I don't know if this section is this bad, I can't, I, I was wrong once, I don't want to speculate again. I'd rather have hard empirical data to go see what's actually going on there. We cannot camera under those conditions because it's going to be underwater and just going to be floating around, and it's, we cannot, we won't be, no company will be able to camera that and actually be able to get a, a view of it because of, again, just the flows and the velocity of it, so.
While it's running.
While it's running, correct. That's why, I wish we could do it, but again, all that, it just sinks and all, and all you just see is bubbles and other, other stuff, and it just doesn't help us in any way, shape, or form. So we do, we will have to bypass this section, and since we're already here and having to go over here, I'm suggesting just go another 150 feet and get it into this manhole, so that way we can do section three and section two, clean it, camera, and move on from, and take it from there.
Line it if possible.
Yes.
So by lining it, what are we looking at for the duration? Like, how many years does that liner, what are we looking at?
That has a 50-year warranty.
Okay. I thought that's what I heard, I wanted to make sure.
It's an amazing product considering, again, how they do it, and again, for, for 50 years, it's, well, it's worth the money.
So as of right now, we have no idea what that pipe is doing under freshwater brook.
Correct.
Whether it's taking water in or not, because I looked today, and a 36-inch pipe collapsed will take 17,000 gallons of water a minute or dump all that sewage into freshwater pond, which if deep came out, we'd be in deep, maybe that's why they name it Deep, because we'd be in deep poopy.
You are correct, and that's, and that's the uncertainty of this whole section. After seeing this, I'm a little more concerned about this section. I guess, you know, when we get by here, I think would be okay, but we have to, again, I, I think it would be wise to get us past this point here, and then we can worry about other sections later and doing other bypasses, but it's going to be, the challenge is going to be getting that 18-inch plastic pipe that you saw either across the brook here or like run down the sidewalk through here, then come back down this way. That's going to be the only challenge, and we have to figure out what deep has to say about that, and if there's any other permits or protections, we have to have to make certain that if the pipe does release or if it does break or split, we're not just pumping in it anyway. So I don't know what those requirements are yet, because it's all kind of breaking news, this is all from the other night, that we were able to get in there and still able to get those photos that you see in these pictures.
Wow, that's pretty eye-opening.
Are you all set, Donald?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Donald. Questions?
Should we, should we read the resolutions first before we start going to questions? Because I know we have two here, I want to make sure.
You're done with your presentation?
I am done, yes.
The town attorney handed out an amended resolution, so that's the one that we'll be using. And it was only to address the language that it was the emergency provision of our charter that we were proceeding under.
But don't we need, don't we need both?
Yeah, we need the first one first, and then we amend it to the second.
Yeah, what I, what I tracked, it's a motion to amend the existing resolution.
Right, you got to read the, yeah.
First, first. You approve the motion, the amendment, and then vote on the amendment.
Correct.
Well, you know the procedure, yeah.
Great.
So, may I just ask?
Sure.
Well, I think we have to let him read the resolution, then we can ask questions. So go ahead, and then second it, then you can ask questions.
Okay. This is a request for transfer of funds for repair of the 920 Enfield Street sewer main break of $700,000. The budget impact, there will be no impact on the town budget. Recommendation, the Enfield Town Council approved the following resolution. Certification, I hereby certify that the above stated funds are available as of August 30th, 2023, 2024, 2024, by Johnny Wilcox, CPA. Be resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made from general fund revenues, appropriated fund balance, $700,000 to general fund transfer out, and contingencies, transfer to capital, $700, from WPC capital revenue, general fund transfer in, $700, to WPC infrastructure sewer line replacement, $700.
So moved.
Second.
The motion's made and seconded.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the resolution titled, "Request for Transfer of Funds for 920 Enfield Street Main Break, $700,000," as follows. Be it resolved, pursuant to Enfield Town Charter, Chapter 6, Section 5, the Town Council has determined that a public emergency jeopardizing the lives, health, and property of citizens exists as a result of the sewer trunk line collapse of 920 Enfield Street and potential sewer line failures adjacent to the collapsed area, and be it resolved, pursuant to the above referenced charter provision, the Town Council hereby authorizes an emergency appropriation in the amount of $1,600,000 for repairs necessary to end the above referenced public emergency. Be it resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F, the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made from general fund revenue to appropriated fund balance, $1.6 million, to general fund transfer out of contingencies, $1.6 million, from WPC capital revenue, $1.6 million, to WPC infrastructure, $1.6 million.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Motion's made and seconded.
Motion's made and seconded, and now we'll open it up to questions. Actually, Bob was up first, but I, I think you had a question about the resolution, Cindy?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to get clarification. This amend, amended resolution is to replace the initial resolution? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So if that, if that's the case, there's an additional $900,000, and I know through our merit to our town manager, I know, Chris, you mentioned emergency funding, is the $900,000?
$900,000.
I'm sorry, 900,000, thank you, $900,000, count toward the emergency, or does it include what is projected for emergency?
Yeah, what we've done is, we're going to appropriate 1.6 million, which is the 1% we're entitled to do. $700,000 has already been spent, so that's the section one.
Okay, gotcha.
And $900,000 would represent funding for section two and maybe three, but we won't expend a penny until we complete, we know the first section's paid for. Donald said we've done some visual in section two. Once they've gone in and actually can give us a visual and tell us if it's going to be amenable to do the cleaning and that system of relining, he'll let us know the amount. I will talk to leadership and council. You'll have already appropriated it, but then you can approve it, just so we know. I don't think that that second tranche of 900 will be enough to do section two and three. From what Donald said, that section three looks like it's going to be quite challenging because of the bypass and over the water, and we're going to have to bring deep in. And I'm not being critical, but when they come in, there will be a lot of requirements, and they're usually expensive, so we'll comply with those too. But we'll give you the estimates, Cindy. We know tonight, section one is done, it's re-lined, it costs $700,000, we'll pay off all the vendors, and then we'll have 900 in reserve. Todd Mathews in from Water Pollution Control will be meeting with his staff and the contractors Thursday to come up with a second proposal if it's viable, and then we'll communicate it to you. All, by doing it in one night means we just, I don't have to bother you all to come in for another special meeting on that one item. If we want to, we'll be in a position to just say, go ahead and do it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Bob?
Donald, thank you and your team, great job getting that done. Two questions. One, the liner, you say is good for 50 years, and I'm not going to be around in 50 years, but what is the plan after that? Does that pipe have to be replaced, or is there another, I mean, we still got inventions coming up, I'm sure, but is that done after the pipe will be done?
In my world, I think it would be done, because I don't, I don't think I'm going to be here in 50 years either, so.
All right.
I honestly don't know, the innovation, I mean, just, I mean, just looking at, just looking at that, counselor, just, it's amazing that can turn into what it did as it is right now, so I can't imagine the technology in 50 years from now.
I can't either, I just didn't know if they had, this was the end of it, once they put that liner in.
Not that I'm aware of.
All right, and the second sections here, second and third, there'll be no overtime for this, is that?
We were trying, we will try to do this under normal conditions, or typical work-hour conditions. Again, it's a little more planned, but it's still under that, big, and based on that information from those visuals, it's still kind of an emergency situation, but at least it could be planned, it could be done during daylight, stuff, and we're not having to have special crews come in. You know, when the contractors come in and they work that long overnight, that messes them up for the next day because of DOT rules and all these other kind of things, so some of those companies don't have enough labor to do, that's why we're short-staffed. A couple of those contractors, they just couldn't find the people because they already were committed to another job. So doing this during regular working hours or typical working hours will be beneficial to us as well.
I figured that was your plan, I just wanted to.
And I'll just add, because, you know, we had been out there, and the mayor and John and others, I'm sure, and they appreciate that, but fatigue is, is a deadly enemy on these work sites. And I'll just tell you, and I think those of you in the construction trades know, trench work is the most dangerous construction work there is. We were doing Ocean, I was public safety director, you know, DEP in Ocean, that's, I mean, because as Donald said, when you get down there into that tube, and it happens like all of a sudden the rain starts, you're engulfed before they can even get you out of there. And we had a couple incidents, I don't want to talk to the employer, the employees, but they, they're okay, but remember, we're on shifting ground where we didn't know at any point, or they didn't know what, a further collapse, you know, it started this size and ended up as big as this room. You're standing on the edge and it starts to, you know, these are very dangerous situations that our workers go into, so we figured we had better take a little time. It will be worth it in the long run, because they'll come up with a plan that probably, I know will be safer, but probably will save us money too, so we're being cautious.
No, I agree, and infrastructure is our big fix right now, is what we should be focused on. Thank you, Donald, thanks again.
Councilman Ludwig.
Welcome, sir. Again, thank you for you and your staff. The grid you had earlier, the 50% grid, curious, by doing this, does it help? Great Brooks underway, correct, so that that's being done. Sparkle came under bid. Is there any, is Sparkle part of this, or is that outside the grid?
No, it's outside of it.
All right, so is there any residual impact on those projects, meaning positives, since, you know?
The flow of the, right now, we have oddly low flows right now, which everything came together last Thursday evening into Friday morning. It's still, the flows are what the flows are, there's no real, we're not improving them, we're not taking, they are still the same, and they are highly, highly variable. The one thing that is constant is Great Brooks' flow.
Right.
The gravity line, we were fighting that since the minute we stuck it in, because we put those discharge, or the suction pipes in, sometimes it would go off, sometimes the well would come up within five feet of the top, then they would, you know, the pump would kick on, then they would drain it right down to nothing, then it would cavitate, would lose suction, and it kept doing that all night, so that we had to put in two 8-inch pumps instead of two 6, that 12, and just keep finding the right blend, so.
Layman's terms, so the, the pipe burst, so it was sucking in the ground above it or whatever, and that's what caused the sinkhole, layman, basically.
The weakened, the weakened concrete, as you see in those, in these, like, this picture here, plus that happens to be in a driveway, which isn't necessarily helping matters.
Right, so, but that's basically what happened.
Yes, the top, like, if you could just imagine, you're like, where my cursor is, like a piece like this big, just fell, just basically.
But it's still flowing, so it's sucking from above, right? So it's.
Right, so that's where all, right, and it just kept falling through, the material had nowhere to go.
Right.
And you can tell by the size of this material that it wasn't going to be held together, it was just going to ploop right, and that was, that's how we did it.
And John, I know, John, two clarifications. When we talk about fund balance, is this coming from the Water Pollution Control fund balance, or our town fund balance? There's two different fund, or is it coming from both?
And we had previously supplied a written email last week, which showed where this funding was coming from, so if any of you don't have it, John will answer now, but we can resend it too.
Yeah, well, I think it's important for the public to understand, because there's two separate fund balances we're talking about here.
Absolutely. Yes, I took this from the general fund, fund balance. The reason is that we had changed the billing methodology for the Water Pollution Control Fund, even though there was probably enough money in there to deal with it, I thought it'd be a little bit more prudent to use the general fund, fund balance rather than that, just to, till we find out for sure how that.
Probably three to four million into Water Pollution Control Fund balance, roughly?
Yeah, probably three.
So if tonight, if some projects aren't approved for ARPA, can we move some of that money into here at some point to help as well?
Yes, we could, yes.
Right, to limit some of the fund balance use?
I mean, it, you can't be more than the 1.6, because that's the max.
Right, no, I meant, I'll say some of the cost, that's all I'm saying, not more than 1, but some of that at 1.6.
Yes.
Okay, and thank you. And so, again, I have to admit, I'm a little sensitive when we talk about emergencies, because I managed through one, and, and quite frankly, I get nervous that government uses the word emergency a little too flippant these days to get what they want. And I'm not suggesting we're doing it here, I'm just suggesting, whatever legal opinion we have on this, I'd like it somewhere where the town residents can see it. My opinion, this is a big deal. You know, we're, we're calling it an emergency, and it better be an emergency. I'm just saying, I'm not saying.
I understand it, but I got to take a little offense at this.
All right, look, I'm, I'm saying.
The main street collapses 50% of the sewage, and you want it, you're going to question, you want a legal opinion that that qualifies as an emergency?
I want to make sure that it does.
Well, he said it has, and so was the manager, I think any.
That's all I'm asking for, legal opinion, that's it.
Okay. And it's light out, and it's 10 of 7, September 30.
Again, I think it's a reasonable request, so if we want to disagree, then that's fine. I think the public wants to see it as well. That's only my suggestion.
Well, for those of us who were there and looked down at this torrent of liquid sewage, it was an emergency, and the people who nearly stumbled and went down and could have lost their lives, it was an emergency. And if 50% of the people in town had lost their sewage, it's an emergency.
You would have to go to referendum, we're not going to referendum. First of all, I don't, I don't appreciate your, you know, I'm asking a legitimate question, you made a comment about a legal opinion, the public has a right to see it, that's all I'm saying.
I didn't say he did.
And I wasn't suggesting.
No, no, I mean, I know you're very.
Point of order, we're not going to go back and forth on this.
No, no, no.
He made his point, you made your point.
No, it's legitimate, and I know you're.
And with questions, please.
And you're curious, but I'm just telling you, I just want to state and elaborate, when you are at 2:00 AM on a sidewalk.
Again, that's not the point.
No, 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 I'm just saying, though.
That's not the point, Chris.
Yes, it is.
No, it's not.
Because an emergency means that something we can't deal with in-house at the time. So when the street is collapsing and the sewage is overflowing, if we didn't act, you saying that we should have waited to the next day and had a special meeting to go out to bid?
I didn't say that at all, Chris.
Well, what's the point of it then? If it's, if you're going to the point where we're not, no, because you offend me, no, no, Mr. Mayor, because it's important.
You're talking about two issues that are combined. Chris, you're talking about the 700,000 original appropriation. That, I don't think he's challenging. He's questioning the other 900 we added to it. So they're two separate issues, so you both have valid points, but screaming at each other is not solving it.
We're not screaming.
Let's just move on.
Michael didn't scream.
We get the legal opinion.
John, you've heard me scream. I don't think I was screaming. All I would like to say is this, that I think sometimes we have to beg credulity when we have to ask, is it light out? All I'm saying, Mike, is.
You have a legitimate right to ask it.
You can ask it.
If you want to argue with me, we'll take this afterwards.
I will.
No, I have to admit, I don't like your line of questioning.
You want to go and have, you're going to call me out in the parking lot?
I'm done.
My point is this, if you can't trust your Public Works Director, your man, yes, it does. If we don't know, if you don't think.
Go to a referendum, then it's not. That's the point.
How would we have done that, Mike, for the, we got a cave in?
I want to see the legal opinion. That's all I'm saying.
To say that the road caved in and we, it's an emergency. Okay.
Okay.
But if you don't have faith in your staff to be able to say that that was an emergency and you want a legal opinion.
Faith in staff, Chris, okay.
Faith in your staff or me. All right. Because if we don't know what an emergency is.
I requested a legal opinion this morning for this. Mark, I believe you have it?
You asked for one this morning?
I asked for one from Tom.
Next time, I'm going to stop the bulldozers, the plows, and tell everybody to go home until I get a legal opinion that this is an emergency.
You're completely out of line.
I have the privilege of the floor. You've asked me what an emergency is. Why is it important, Mike? And I'm explaining what we went through. And welcome Jeff Russo. This is town council meetings, but I don't know why people upset. I'm not upset with Mike. I've worked with Mike through COVID.
For legitimate reason, ask the question.
And you can. I am just elaborating for people at home.
I'm firing back at you, so I'm not.
You can. And I'm smiling because I'm not upset about it.
Go to your explanation.
You're good with my explanation? I didn't hear that.
Both of you, yes. It's, we're moving on.
Okay.
Now, do we have a legal opinion here tonight? I asked Tom Tyler for it.
Oh, Tom's, Tom's out of sick.
I understand that.
I don't have anything.
I thought that's where we were bringing Mark in for the legal opinion.
Well, Mark's prepared this because he said it's an emergency. So now we can do another opinion to say when he said it was an emergency, he was telling the truth, that it was. He wasn't making it up for me or anyone else, and that we can spend the money and protect the sewer system.
Do you have a, Danine, legal opinion from years back?
Yeah.
Can you please read that?
So why is that a big deal?
Mike, Mike, you're done? We're not going to keep going back and forth. You made your point, he made his.
I haven't talked in four minutes.
Let's move on. Mark, please go ahead.
No, I, I'm sorry. And if you asked, if you talk to Tom about this, he's the interim town attorney. I'm not. Tom, for all I know, he may have been working, he may be working on it already. Sometimes writing a legal opinion on incredibly short notice is not always the wisest thing to do because there could be errors. So if Tom's, is working on it, I'll, when he's feeling better, I'll ask him if he's put any work into this. The opinion we have, it's a legal opinion, it's available at the town clerk's office. All legal opinions, it's 2011-1, it was by former town attorney, Danine. It's available in the town clerk's office, right, Sheila?
Yeah.
And it basically talks about, doesn't define what an emergency is. This, that 2011 was based on, remember Storm Alfred, the big snowstorm, thanks, at Halloween time? That's what it was based on. So generally speaking, and I, and Tom might disagree or not disagree, generally, definition of emergency is, it's a fact-based thing. It's not, it's what Public Works or the police chief or whoever might determine. But I'll defer to Tom. Let's see what he says. And he may, Tom does a lot of research, so he may have something prepared for you. I don't have it. I was here, I just basically rewrote the resolution for you folks tonight.
I did talk to him, just so you know, and asked him because it came in late, and he said, you know, I'm sick, I'm not coming. But basically, he said we had the Danine opinion. I think his, I don't want to speak for him, but I think his gut reaction was sort of like mine. I mean, if this isn't an emergency, what is? And I don't mean to, I'm not kicking you, Mike. But I don't know if he thinks he's supposed to do one because he said Danine was on, and I said have Mark here in case they ask anything. Maybe I should have told him to come. But I know where Mike's coming from. I know Mike.
Right. All right. Councilman Santinella.
Okay. Thank you. Donald, just, so first of all, I, I did go to see that situation. And I just also want to extend my thanks to the department, the guys that worked all hours of the day and night. Those conditions were just really hard to take. And so I just wanted to add my thanks to them for all that they did. I want to just go back to the feasibility of getting the pipe that is under the brook completed with this appropriation because, and maybe I'm not thinking about this properly, so correct me if I'm wrong, fixing stuff that's buried under the ground that's not underwater is one thing, but I perceive it to be catastrophic if a pipe under a waterway gives way, either sucking water into our sewer system or dumping sewage into a waterway. That seems to be the biggest potential crisis that we need to avoid. Am I right in thinking about it that way?
It is going to be a challenge to, again, to camera that. That is a priority, but to get to that one, we're just, we're just in as much shape and it would be just as easy at the point because we have to bypass from the same situ, same manhole. So if you go back to here, even to access this, we still have to bypass from here and shut this one off and go all the way around this one. We still have to do that. So it would be, it would behoove us at that time, I said, to create that bypass and have a dump here and we can do both these sections at the same time. If we have to have a choice between, if it comes downward, Section 2 looks like Section 3 or vice versa, Section 3 looks like Section 2, and the appropriation could only allow for one, I would pick this one hands down to do it, if that was the case.
So I guess that's, I think that's my biggest concern and from the conversation we had in leadership, that's our biggest concern, is that that is the problem that we eliminate. I'm just gonna look at you guys. Yeah, just go ahead because we've talked about this a number of times.
Unfortunately, like he said, we, it is on. So we have to divert from there all the way around both sections. So when we're in there, the one under the brook, I think he was saying, he took it as how difficult is it going to be to fix? You were more to, if that blows, what kind of world are we in?
Yeah, but I guess, okay, so I'm just going to take the floor back for a second. So I just, my, my concern is that we're appropriating the maximum amount that we can appropriate at the moment for this emergency situation. If we don't fix the problem under the water and something happens under the water, we don't, I don't know that we can go back. I mean, we're going to be doing this all over again.
Right. So I think to Ali, your concerns, this, this Section 1 was a very unique problem because again, it involved blacktop, it involved digging down, it involved repairing, it involved pouring concrete on top of it. We have the benefit here of Section 2 and 3 that nothing has collapsed yet and we're not excavating. What we need to, the biggest part of this whole Section 2 and 3 is the bypass to get the water from stop going into this manhole and to stop it from here. If it was traditional lining like we do all throughout the year in town, the staff enters one manhole here, they blow that pipe through to the other manhole, they cook it, they cure it, and they walk away. There's no digging, no nothing. That is the benefit that I think we have here in Section 2 and 3 that we didn't have in 1. Because of that depth of excavate, we had to repair that pipe. We're not repairing any pipe here. We're just going to be cleaning, cambering, and lining without having to excavate anywhere. We just need to get, get that bypass around it so we can keep it dry.
Okay. Very good. And then just my final comment. So I also had some concerns over this appropriation based on our boundaries with regard to the charter and what we can spend without going to referendum. So I, there is no doubt in my, I, in my mind, this is an emergency. There's, I'm not questioning that. But I don't know that we have all the pieces from the town attorney. So I would like to propose an amendment to this that somewhere in the second paragraph says, subject to the final approval of the town attorney, that we just have that piece in place that, or I'm going to look at the person sitting in the town attorney's, does that not make sense?
He, he basically is saying, that's your function. He doesn't, they won't.
Okay.
Go ahead.
We don't approve budgetary items.
Could you say that again?
Our office does not approve budgetary line items.
Well, yeah, so maybe I can ask, maybe I can add to, since the temperature, if you would, I think it would help.
Can I just, can I just, look, I'm not.
No.
I just need to understand, I mean, are we the people that say that this is an emergency? Or does that, is there a criteria that the town attorney's office?
Thank you.
I just need the guidance, I just need to know what guidance we need.
Mark's going to read you the second one. And that, my point wasn't to fight with Mike, whom I care for deeply, but I don't want us to set up a situation where, for instance, Mike, in this one, right? And, you know, you guys have asked, I haven't asked for the legal opinion. I, you know, whomever did, that's fine. They work for you. But if we're going to say now, and John, the crux of this is, he's going to tell you what an emergency is, but the charter envisions that you as the council will then determine basically if it was or not. Because think of where we are right now. If tonight, Mike, we get an honorary town attorney and says, nope, it's not an emergency. He now, and again, it's a factual, it's not legal. You've now supplanted your authority for his. So for instance, tonight, Mark or Tom said, nope, we're not going to say it's an emergency, we don't know. We're dead in the water and we set a precedent that in the future, you can't act in an emergency because we're going to have to wait for a town attorney. Now, remember, they could issue a town attorney. It's his opinion. Either way, it is or it isn't. Somebody could appeal it to a judge who was then going to say, well, I think it was, I don't, all the way to the Supreme Court. And I think that was my, wasn't jumping up ugly with you, Mike. It's just I kind of, we always both looked to process. And I'm thinking in the future, sitting here, oh my goodness, if we now abrogate, and after the factory for the second stage, we can do that. I think it's a good idea to break these. The first one, we owe it. The second one, do the amendment and say, okay, is it still an emergency? Because you, you know, when you're talking about that part, if we can't do it right away, and I talked to the town attorney, we're so contiguous that we're still there fixing it, it is an emergency continuing. If we wait two, three, four weeks, it's not an emergency anymore, is it?
Yeah, John, that's the floor.
So that was my thought. That's my long way, Mike, of saying sometimes. And that's why.
Right. So.
I like when we discuss these things before the meeting and I can.
If we don't act after seeing the video and hearing our experts and it collapses, that is 100% neglect on this council. When Deep comes in and says, you guys knew about this and you didn't do anything running under that brook any other place, I would agree. As far as emergency appropriation and following the charter and, you know, the voters have a right to discuss anything over 800,000, nobody agrees with that more than me. Unfortunately, I was one of two people who voted against giving the Board of Ed 5.9 million, which none of you thought needed any of this, and that wasn't an emergency. And you took the voice away from the voters. So now why all of a sudden is an actual emergency where 50% of our sewage could end up in freshwater pond, needs to go to referendum or needs to have public hearings, but the Board of Ed's 5.9 million, you guys gave to them without any of it? I don't understand that. You can't have it both ways. So this is an emergency because if that pipe fails under freshwater brook, the millions of dollars of fines, those taxpayers should demand our resignation. That's wrong. How many times do we see so-and-so got fined for dumping in the river because of a heavy rainfall? And this is sheer neglect on us. John, you saw it. You saw the pictures, and I know you agree, you're concerned, but I'm not worried about an emergency. I'm worried about making a stupid decision that is going to impact this town for millions of dollars. And if they don't have the bypass set up, when it collapses, 50% of Enfield's sewage is going where? It's going to start filling up people's basements. The pipe, he showed the picture of the pipe that they cleaned out. Did we notice the sewage is blocked off, but that pipe is still full of water? And if you follow the pitch, it gets deeper, the farther goes down. That's a gravity pipe. Water runs downhill. So what's in that pipe holding that water back? Is there more debris that we saw the pictures? We saw the pictures. It's clear as day. There's an issue there, and I don't want to ignore it. Go ahead, John.
Okay. I just want to clarify, because I think we kind of went on some tangents here. I'm not suggesting that we shouldn't do this. I'm just trying to make sure administratively we are in our lane with the authority, the proper authority to do what we're going to do. That's all I'm asking. I am 100% behind doing this. So I don't want this to turn into a, another discussion about something that's so tangential from the problem. I just want to make sure we have, we're doing this in the proper way. So that's all I'm asking. I will pull my amendment.
No, no, no. I like your amendment.
Okay.
But it, why?
I'm going to, I'm going to pull my amendment off.
If it's an emergency appropriation.
Because the town council is the one that determines if it's an emergency. So that was his last.
Okay.
So if it's not the town attorney.
Okay.
So I'm going to accept that answer and pull the, my amendment to this and just leave this as.
Because Marie was going to do the same thing you were.
Okay. So I'm fine. I don't have any other questions.
Mr. Mayor, and John, and thank you. And you know, these things get tense because we're doing them, these guys are up 24 hours, we're dealing with, they're trying to fill you in. They're, they're happening as we speak. So we didn't have like months to prepare it. We had to come up and try to get everything before you to discuss today. But if you look at the resolution that Mark did, I think it explains it now that we've had the discussion. Be resolved pursuant to Enfield Town Charter, Chapter 6, Section 5. The town council has determined that a public emergency jeopardizing lives, health, property exists. You make the decision, not Mark.
Right.
Mark, do you agree?
Yeah.
You're good?
And that's why when we do these, it's nice, if we get questions of this magnitude before, we try to do the research and answer them so we don't have to do it and take time at the meeting. But.
Okay.
It's unavoidable sometimes.
Thank you, John. Mike, did you have something? You're good? Councilman Crissati.
Yeah, good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Donald, once again, to you and your staff and the crew that came down from Texas, I believe. Is that correct?
The parent company's out of Texas. They're from Charlton, Mass.
From Charlton, Mass. Well, all to be commended. I do not want the council to lose perspective of, you know, with some of the arguing and going back and forth here in regard to really the, the scope of what was, what took place, the amount of time and energy. And really, this is an emergency situation. I don't care what anybody says. You look at it, and if you really cared about it, you would have went down there and witnessed. I went down there, I saw the workers down there. I saw how far that they had to go down in there. It is dangerous, dangerous. Heaven forbid there was no accident during that time. I think what we're doing is appropriate. I think all of the, the extra funds to get these other, and especially the Section 3, if that's the big concern, that we do not wait on. That is an emergency waiting to happen. So let's not lose sight of the fact of what we're doing here tonight, and let's actually vote on this. So this is all that I'm, I'm saying. Enough of this, you know, we all know what the charter states. We all know that we're the ones that will determine if it's an emergency or not. This is an emergency. If you don't think this is an emergency, I'm sorry, there's something wrong with you. I'm sorry. But I'm just going to leave it at that. But thank you.
Okay. So just to be clear, it takes eight votes to pass this. So are there any other questions? Seeing none, as amended, roll call, please.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, but we need to vote on the amendment and then adopt it as amended.
Okay. That's what I was talking about, the amendment.
Sorry.
So we're voting on the amendment, to be clear, which elevates it from 700,000 to 1.6 million for the next two sections that we saw on the screen. So roll call for the amendment, please.
Counselor Sacala.
Four.
Counselor Crissati.
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson.
Four.
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Nasuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Counselor Rosu.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
And Counselor Angier.
Four.
Eleven members in favor, none against.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to the main motion as amended. Any questions on that? Councilman Ludwig.
My question was about the charter. It wasn't about the emergency. And I have
My question was about the charter, it wasn't about the emergency, and I have to admit, I'll leave it at that, but I have to admit, at some point, we'll have this discussion. The charter's pretty clear, it says we have to waive the public hearing to do this. So should that be part of the amendment, should that be an amendment as part of this?
I'm sorry, what?
Charter says if we're going to make an emergency appropriation, we're supposed to have a public hearing.
I would ask the town attorney...
Because I was putting this together.
That's what my question was.
Yeah, because this is why I don't like doing things...
Before everyone jumped all over me and said I'm a terrible guy.
I forgot to add that.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I just might want to add that, because I was...
So I'm trying to make sure that we're legal by the charter, that's it. I wasn't questioning Donald, I wasn't questioning you. All right, I'm going to say it publicly.
I appreciate that, Mike, and I respect you too, and it wasn't personal to you either. Thank you.
So... I'll entertain a motion to amend, to waive the public hearing as a second amendment to the original agenda.
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor of the second amendment? Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you for bringing that up, Councilman Ludwig. So now, we're back to the main motion as amended twice. Roll call, please.
Councilor Sacala?
Four.
Councilor Crisati?
Four.
Councilor Hendrickson?
Four.
Councilor Ludwig?
Four.
Councilor Mangini?
Four.
Councilor Nasuda?
Four.
Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner?
Four.
Councilor Russo?
Four.
Councilor Santinella?
Four.
Councilor Ungeyer?
Four.
Eleven members present, none against.
Donald, I want to thank you, and please thank all the guys. Please keep us up to date as it progresses. I know a few of us are very concerned about freshwater, and we'll probably be out there watching as it progresses.
Will do.
All right, and thank you again. So, moving on, to number four, is freshwater pond, four bay dredging.
Alex, can you turn the presentation back on?
Let me read the resolution. This is a request for transfer of funds for the freshwater pond, four bay dredging project of $250,000. There will be no budget impact on the town budget, the recommendation is the council approved. Be it resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made from general fund revenues appropriated fund balance of $250,000 to non-departmental expenses, transfers out and contingencies, transfer to capital $250,000 from CIP revenues, fiscal year 2025, general fund transfer in $250,000 to freshwater pond, other property services $250,000.
So moved. Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Donald.
Mr. Mayor, so this is the second half. First half was sewer, this, all of these projects are much more palatable. As you know, during the budget, we had to cut back on certain projects that we had designated to do because of just fiscal realities. Some we eliminated and some we cut back. What we've designated now on the Sparkle Pump Station, bid came in, $811,300 underbid, so we have $811,000 of available ARPA fund from that. The DPW generator came in, under, we have $43,934, we swept for that. So we have a total available of $855,234.65. Now, we know we have to spend, we have to designate that by December, and then we have to spend it within the year. As we said before, ARPA was used for a lot of different purposes, but, I mean, I think that the preference was to use it on projects for CIP that would last a long time and not be gone after the funding. So, we're going to start these, some councilors had all the numbers and where the money's coming from, that's the total. We're going to go through ones that I was, I put them in the order where I was informed that pretty much they thought you had agreement on, I think, two or three, and a couple you wanted more information to discuss. So I had Donald do a slide for each one, just reel down and dirty, the project, the money, and where it's coming from. So the first one we're going to look at is, Donald, what are you going to look at first? Okay, this is the freshwater pond dredging by DEP requirements, we have to do it every five to seven years, we're doing it, we went out to bid, as you can see, 716, well, the low bid, 983. Donald can get into any of the details, but we're short, and the reason being, there's a lot of contaminants that come down through the waterway, is caught in the brooks and streams that dump into freshwater, and they're, they far exceed what is allowable. So that's contaminated, and that increased the cost of getting rid of that soil, if it weren't contaminated, by about a quarter of a million. So Donald, can you just give a quick overview as to why we're short, and what your plan is to address it with the funding and the new system, the new process that you're hoping to be able to use to save money that's available now nationally?
All right, so like Chris said, this is the, this is the four bay, so this is the footbridge that we're going to be talking about in a few items, and here's the pier that goes out. And the last time that we dredged the pond, from here, basically following that arc, are gabions installed in the ground. Those gabions are basically giant chain link fence boxes filled with rocks to hold back and filter all the material that kind of comes through here. So we find a variety of things between just, kind of, just silt and all other kind of stuff that gets trapped here, and again, every five years, we are mandated by DEP and Army Corps to physically dredge this. Chris mentioned that we have a little, we have a lot higher than normal contaminants, including, just there's a variety of things, some of it I don't even understand. But to get rid of the soil, so DEP has a very unique understanding of what is soil. So there's either native, there's either contaminated, or there's polluted, either one of those three. The second that an excavator or whatever takes out a scoop of soil from the bottom, and it breaches the water, it turns into soil. It's not soil when it's below the water, it's soil when it comes out of the water. So in through here, we both have polluted and contaminated soil in through here. So there was a few methods to look at to combat how much it was contaminated, and how to cut that, and how to maybe bring that to the transfer station. One of the, one of the ways to do that is that there's expected to be about 4,000 yards of material that will come out of it. They did a bathymetric study, which basically means they have sonars that go in, and they read the floor of it, then they go do drilling, and they kind of determine what is underneath, and how thick that blanket of silt and other kind of goodies are in this area. So to do, so to take that 4,000 yards and bring it to the transfer station, I would have to have somebody mine or bring in 4,000 yards of clean fill, which we do have at the transfer station in the back in our sand pit, but we'd have to have mining trucks, we'd have to have things bring it to a mix, basically it's called a trommel, it's this gigantic mixing thing with belts and all, so you have to take one scoop of the contaminated, one scoop of clean, mix it up, put it in a pile, put that in a pile, then we have to have an environmental use restriction forever on that property where that thing, where that soil resides for basically eternity, because it's contaminated. Now it goes from contaminated to polluted. But by the time it gets, but natural earth does its thing and gets rid of those pollutants, it's just going to take forever to do it. So the easiest way is to just dispose of it. And that's where that part comes in, because the 983 includes full disposal of it, doing the traditional method of basically taking like thousand-pound peanut bags, I don't know if you've ever seen them, they're probably half the size at this desk, maybe six feet tall, blocking all this off here, setting up pumps, which we're good, again, bypass pumps, they would have to pump from here and go pump all the way around here and dump the water over here, so this becomes dry, this is still wet, in through here. So then they would bring in excavators like they did the last time, scoop all this stuff out, de-water it, and get rid of it. So that is the traditional method, and that is what that 983.390 is. Now, the contractor has another method that has been accepted throughout the country, and it's sort of a new technique where we don't do the bypass here, we don't drain this, we basically take our, take a giant vector like we were using on site, with the pipes and everything, and basically just go in there and vacuum off the stuff off the bottom, and not have to worry about the bypassing. Now, the contractor has stated it's about a 30% reduction in cost, and as we are entertaining that with DEP and our engineer of record right now, we're still awaiting, our engineer said it is okay as of today, we're still waiting for approval from DEP if that's a method that they will accept us to do. So at worst, it would be 983.390, at best, it'll be 30% less than that. But in the meantime, I got, I really kind of need to get the project going, and we should have had this almost done by now, but it's not going to take long to do. But I have to award it at this price, then we can come back later, and if we, if DEP does render their opinion in the affirmative that we can use this method, obviously, all that funding that John has put aside would go back to wherever John wants it to go, or wherever it's decided to go.
Thank you. My one question, Donald, is, I've seen the bladder system work before on dirty jobs, but when they drain, or when they start, if they were to pump it around, how do they stop the pond from going backwards into that area?
We have two drainage pipes here that get exposed, there's two pipes that actually connect way, way down below. If that's what breaches the gabions, those big giant, like I said, those steel, the chain link fence boxes full of rocks, there's two giant pipes there, and we plug those, and that doesn't go back.
Oh, so the blocks, the water doesn't flow through them?
No, because you still have flow over here, because you're causing it to draft this way.
Okay. Questions? Councilman Santinella?
Real quick question, so this two, this additional 250, this is not from ARPA? I thought these were part of the ARPA funds that we...
This one is not from ARPA, because we have money already designated for this, and plus we're using up most of the ARPA for the other projects.
Okay, I thought, okay. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? So the 30% increase could end up being a break even.
Decrease.
No, increase, we're increasing right now, we're not decreasing. So the 30% increase we're approving, if it approves tonight, if Donald can pull off with DEP, the new way, it should wash out, we just get our money back, the increase we get back, and it goes back to the original price. So hopefully, you can work your magic. Any other questions? Roll call.
Councilor Sacala?
Four.
Councilor Crisati?
Four.
Councilor Hendrickson?
Four.
Councilor Ludwig?
Four.
Councilor Mangini?
Four.
Councilor Nasuda?
Four.
Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner?
Four.
Councilor Russo?
Four.
Councilor Santinella?
Four.
And Councilor Ungeyer?
Four.
Eleven members in favor, none against.
Thank you. Moving on, resolution waiving bids, waiving bids for the insulation, installation of an accessible concrete sidewalk and pavement removal at the Enfield Depot, 810 Enfield Street.
Five is freshwater, you missed one, you missed one.
Saw freshwater. Backing up, request for transfer of funds for repair to the freshwater pond footbridge of $12,000. Be it resolved in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made from non-departmental expenses, transfer out and contingencies, contingency $12,000, to buildings and grounds, construction services, $12,000.
So moved. Second.
Motion's made and seconded.
All right, so the footbridge is in a state of aesthetic disrepair at this point, structurally is doing great, the only, again, the aesthetic part of it is really lacking. So DPW was proposing to replace, again, this was just a temporary fix at the time with the plywood, we're going to go with a little more longer-lasting materials such as ASAC and the like, and replace the sides on that with ASAC, and also going across the top and be able to mount the railing to that. And also, we're going to, the parapet, which is this section here on both sides, would be sanded and stained, and we would apply Trex to, whoops, we would have tried Trex to the actual decking that's existing, because again, there are some structural, there are some aesthetic deficiencies in the decking itself, there's a couple checks, there's a couple chunks taken out, and that would alleviate all that, and would be sort of a long-lasting product compared to what's here. The interesting thing is, these boards, the, on the foot, on the actual footbridge itself are really kind of a goofy size, and to find replacements is almost impossible, all custom milling. So it would be, it would really be helpful to use, again, that Trex material there, we would sand and stain this, we would replace this with, again, that ASAC, which is a kind of a plastic material on both sides, and top it with that as well.
I want to be clear, when you say both sides, you're only talking about the cap, you're not talking about the actual sides of the bridge.
So the cap, you would have like, this is like a 1x4 here, and there's a 1x4 here, then there's a 1x whatever, probably 12 on the top, that's what we'd be replacing there, and we would be sanding and staining this side of the parapet, the other side of the parapet, and also, same thing on the other parapet. So four sides of the parapet, and the top, and we also would face these ends here, so...
Right. So, the bridge is pretty rough, very rough, and I've looked at it quite a bit, I agree with doing the Trex on the bottom, and doing some sort of a waterproof membrane, run the Trex boards long, so the water stays off of that deck, which is going to extend it for many, many years. But I also want to go up the sides, both sides, and completely encapsulate this bridge in Trex and ASAC. I mean, this will be a 40, 50-year fix, we won't have to worry about it. You know, graffiti, if they graffiti it now, they're going to have to paint it. So if somebody graffiti's it, they're going to have to paint whatever gets graffitied. But I personally would like to see this number raised to approximately $30,000 to cover the cost of the Trex to do both sides of the bridge also, so it is completely wrapped. They lift up the galvanized rails, cap the whole thing, and bolt galvanized rails back down, and we forget about it. So, I know I've discussed this with Donald and Chris and John, you and I have talked about it briefly. So I'm one, I go by the expression vinyl is final, you know, we're not going to have to touch it for many, many, many years. So, I don't know how you guys feel, but I'll entertain a motion if somebody's interested.
I would like to make a motion that we increase the 12,000 to 30,000, so that we can completely redo the footbridge with Trex and encapsulate it.
Motion's made, is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Councilman Mangini, question?
Well, this is the first I'm hearing about this, but where are we coming up with the number, 30,000? Is there an estimate that's being provided, or?
This is being done in-house by DPW, and that was their material estimate.
We're getting the 30, I mean, is that an estimate based upon materials, manpower?
The 12,000, 100% was, is board-by-board estimate, or again, we did it through Home Depot, calculated all this, things like that. So the other part, the, if we're going to do on the parapet, depending upon what material is chosen, it could go either way, so we have to find a way to make that work within that. There's a lot of materials out there, after doing some more research about, you know, again, longer life, or, you know, materials other than wood, there's some variety out there, and I just got to, we will make it work within that. We could, there's so much stuff out there, we could go higher than that, or we could go lower than that, it's just, that's kind of like right in between.
So where is the money coming from? Is this ARPA money, or?
It's part of that 800,000 that...
Yes, ARPA. It's 800,000 from ARPA.
John?
This was actually just coming out of the contingency account that we had, mainly because it was more of a repair to the existing building rather, or the, or get it out, existing bridge, rather than the, and it's fairly, a smaller number.
Right, the original 12,000 was coming out of contingency.
If you want to change it to, there, we could change it as well, but...
Also, and again, you don't, you don't, you're not required to do any of these, or you could do something else. We just wanted to act quickly because of the timeframes, and when we found out we had the surplus, we asked John to just do the sweep of what we had, and our understanding, and my desire was that these other projects come from ARPA, I think John, we had said that, so it's news to me that this 12 was coming from elsewhere, but, you know, it's a small amount from John, but you could say, no, we want it from ARPA, we don't want to take it from contingency, or we don't want to do it. So I just want you all to understand that this is all within your discretion, we just know that we have to spend that total amount of 855, we have to encumber it by August, and spend it within the year. So it's these or other projects. We just brought these forward because some of these we had nixed, and some we had cut back, so we didn't want to start a new slate, we figured it'd be appropriate to go back to those projects which you were more familiar with. But you can do anything you want, within the parameters of ARPA.
Councilman Sacala?
So I'm going to ask a question, and I'm not trying...
So I'm going to ask a question and I'm not trying to start an argument. So is the bridge aesthetically unpleasing or is it in rough shape? Like, I, I need one or the other. I need, it's either rough and needs to be repaired or it just looks like crap.
It's rough and needs to be repaired.
Okay. Thank you.
Any, anyone else? Councilman Hendrickson. All right, a couple of questions. One for you, Donald. Now, if we didn't replace the sides there, what's the lifespan on just sanding and painting those?
Whatever the warranty on the Home Depot bucket of stain is, five years or 10 year, whatever it is, that's about it.
And then it just-
Then we'd be doing it again, again, if it was, if it was tagged or if it was whatever, we would have to redo it again.
All right. And John, this one's for you. All right. Contingency fund is ARPA money? No.
No, we build that into the budget every year because, I mean, we're, the size of this town and the number of different departments, things come up that need to be addressed. And so we have money set aside usually to, to deal with those. This year, I have $300,000 set aside.
Okay. So that is not part of the fund balance technically, or it is? I, I see you worded it differently.
It's not out of the fund balance. No, it's part of the regular operating budget.
Budgeted, simply side contingency. Okay. Thank you. Councilman Crissati.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm in definite, in favor of spending the extra funds to be able to do this particular, this project, doing it in Trex. You know, once again, you're looking at lifespan of approximately 40 to 50 years, 45 years. And if that whole project is done with that, with the allocated of the extra funds, it is well worth, worth it. Instead of going back five years to say, oh, we have to repaint this, we have to re-stain it, it's going to look horrible. If you've been down there, that needs to be replaced. It's a danger, it's a hazard down there. So I'm in favor of the, the project.
Also, Pam? And I, I just want to be clear. I'm using the brand name Trex and ASAC as just vinyl. I should be saying some sort of a vinyl, but people are more familiar with it. So I want to be clear, Donald.
No, no, we will use what we can get and that-
Right. When you said there's a million different things, you are correct to do it. Councilman Ludwig.
John, is, if we use this from ARPA, does this qualify, I know that we got lenient, but is, would this qualify as a project we could use for ARPA?
It would, yes.
I'd prefer to use the 30 grand from ARPA. That'd be my, my preference. Let's leave the contingency alone.
Okay.
You want to make a motion to amend it? I'm okay. We're going with ARPA.
Well, so, so I have to make a motion to remove the, right, remove 12 grand from contingency, then move 30 into, from ARPA, from the Sparkle ARPA Fund. Is that a worded right? Because, right, we have to, because the 12 grand is, is allocated here in a specific fund. So I want to make sure, sorry, go ahead.
Right. I guess what I'm struggling is, is we kind of need to take care of the First Amendment first and then make another amendment.
What's the first amendment?
Oh, right. The First Amendment.
We have the First Amendment to increase it to 30 because we already have a motion on the floor for that. Okay.
Got it. Fair.
So let's, if everybody's okay, let's vote on the amendment to go to 30,000 and then we'll go and deal with Mike. So roll call, please.
No, just roll hands.
Show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Thank you.
And I make a friendly amendment to, to remove the 12,000 from contingency and 30,000 coming from the Sparkle ARPA Fund.
Second. Motion's made and seconded. Any questions on that? Roll call or show of hands? All in favor? I know you guys want to go. It's unanimous. So, good, we can finally get that taken care of.
Now you got to vote on the main motion.
Yep.
Now it's roll call.
Roll call.
No more questions?
No.
Okay. Roll call.
Counselor Sikala-
Four.
Counselor Crissati-
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson-
Four.
Counselor Ludwig-
Four.
Counselor Mangini-
Four.
Counselor Nasuda-
Four.
Mayor Nelson-
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner-
Four.
Counselor Russo-
Four.
Counselor Santinella-
Four.
And Counselor Angier-
Four.
Eleven in favor, none against.
Thank you, Sheila. The next one is a resolution waiving bids for the installation of an accessible concrete sidewalk and pavement removal at the Enfield Depot, 810 Enfield Street. Be resolved that in accordance with Chapter 5, Section 8D of the Enfield Town Charter, the Enfield Town Council does hereby determine that it is against the best interest of the town to require a commeted, competitive bidding for the installation of an accessible concrete sidewalk and pavement removal at the Enfield Depot. Prepared, 829, 2024, prepared by Donald T. Noones, Director of Public Works. So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Are there any questions on this? I mean, this is-
I can just state, we already funded it, the 70,000 previously, but to take advantage of the price and this will also come into play with the Higgins Park parking, since the contractors are still available, this is a price that they're willing to give to us. So we want to waive the bid to let them do it. We figure we'll get more bang for our buck. And that way, it's just next door at the 810 where we're putting all of the planning and those folks. We've got to have, right, we're going to, it'll be nice grass all the way from Town Hall to the next building over to the Enfield Express and then the parking will be on the side where we've done it. So this will tie in nicely, but it's already been appropriated. But we'd like this contractor to be able to give us the benefit of his bid, right, Donald? If you have, want to add anything?
Nope. I think Four Seasons has been wonderful.
Great. Okay. Any questions? Seeing none. Roll call.
Counselor Sikala-
Four.
Counselor Crissati-
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson-
Four.
Counselor Ludwig-
Four.
Counselor Mangini-
Four.
Counselor Nasuda-
Four.
Mayor Nelson-
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner-
Four.
Counselor Russo-
Four.
Counselor Santinella-
Four.
And Counselor Angier-
Four.
Eleven in favor, none against.
Thank you, Sheila. Next, we are going to purchase police cruisers, funding allocation for the three Enfield Police Department vehicles.
Motion to waive the reading.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. So out of the ARPA funds, when we went through the tough budget last year, we had told the chief, go ahead.
I'm sorry, motion, I believe we need to vote to waive the reading?
Oh.
A show of hands?
Oh, thank you, Sheila.
Sorry.
She keeps us straight.
Yes, she does. So during the budget, we did have to cut 14 plus vehicles from the police department. And I know Councilman Ludwig and myself, we had discussed that, you know, let the dust settle and in January, we'd revisit it. But at this point, you know, with Sparkle Street coming in under budget by 800,000, we thought this would be a great opportunity to keep our word and try to, you know, make good on what we promised them. So we had a discussion with the chief and we asked him, four cruisers, or would you prefer the Crest Sprinter van and two cruisers? And he came back through the town manager and has requested the two cruisers and the Sprinter van. So that's why this is here. I'm just trying to keep my word to the police department. And, you know, this is money well spent. It's a one-time expenditure and this is what ARPA funds are meant to be used for.
I might elaborate, Mr. Mayor. You are correct that the police department came in with their initial offer. I actually reduced it. And then when council had to look at the, the tough reality of the last year budget, they reduced it completely. I will just state to you that this is actually part of a larger plan to reduce the number of cruisers in the department or at least reallocate them. We have, with the negotiator and folks that we have in the Crest team, six or seven individuals who have take home vehicles. And the reason they do, we're part of the metro traffic and we all know it's Manchester and the larger towns, eight or nine or 10 of them. And we all contribute to Crest barricaded subjects or terrorism or anything like that. But the bottom line is, the Sprinter van will now allow the chief, and he's already started to commence to phase out individual vehicles to each Crest member. The reason that they have their own vehicle now is if you live, you know, 10, 15 miles away or wherever you live, you get the call out in the middle of the night. If you don't have the equipment, you got to go back to the station, get your equipment and then come to the scene. By utilizing the Sprinter van, and Manchester had theirs at the event the other day, so we were able to see it in action. So four or five officers now, they keep their gear in that vehicle. So when there's an incident, they send the vehicle ahead and the officers come from home. So it's more efficient and allows us to put cruisers back on the street. So I wholeheartedly support it. I think they need it. I'll just tell you an anecdote I heard today. We had a sergeant who left five years ago, went down to Florida, retired, he came back and he saw one of his buddy officers at an intersection. He pulled up and he was driving a supervisor vehicle that this guy drove five years ago, that he said we were going to retire 10 years ago. And he couldn't believe it. So I know that we have a lot of discussions back and forth. The mayor had said that we would be looking into, with the chief, to try to be economical where we could. I think this is one of those, that we're, we're spending some money, but we're saving more. Because each vehicle is over 80,000 now. So the Sprinter vehicle alone is, you know, more than one vehicle, but it will allow us to put three or four or five over the next couple of years back on the streets. So I, I endorse it. I, I hope that you support it.
So let me ask Chris, the original request from the chief to you was 17 cars?
I, yeah, it was 17 or, I remember 20, but it could be 17. I-
Right. Well, I think-
I know it was up there.
Original to Chris was 17, then when it came to us.
I put 10, I believe. And then you were initially going to do five and then ultimately with the hard choices you made, we, we didn't allocate any. And we get further and further behind. We've talked about it before, the vehicle replacement program for vehicles. We got to try to hearken back to that. And that's for public works. It's for buses. It's, we had a good program in place, but when times get tough and money's short, that's the first thing that goes, is new vehicles. So before we get too far behind, I think this is a reasonable investment. And I would ask that you support it for all of the reasons, particularly because it's going to free up other vehicles to give to line officers eventually.
So I, I am one of the biggest proponents of, we have to stay on top of the vehicles, even at DPW and stuff, because in 2005, when I came on, we had stop signs over the floorboards in DPW equipment. And it was a huge safety issue. So, you know, I, I still can approve 14, but I just also received news today that we received a check from KERMA for $70,000, reimbursement of something.
Two good things. One, I mean, obviously next to the sidewalk, the 70 grand, we're not asking you to appropriate that. Just keeping back in your mind, that's about the cost of a cruiser. But yes, to your point, KERMA, we switched back. Cindy was a great proponent of this. We were the founding, one of the founding members of KERMA. It's the Connecticut Inter Local Risk Management Association. And what that means is they are an insurer, but you have to be a municipality or a board of ed or a state or a town commissioner of that's, that's all they represent. They don't do private. And as a result of that, they write coverages that are more beneficial to communities. And we couldn't get a rider for freshwater pond. We were coming back to them. Travelers wouldn't insure it for us. KERMA did at no additional cost. So they really work with the towns. They were happy to have us come back. And what they do, they look at the end of the year, remember, they're not for profit. We're a member. And they look at the end of the year to say, okay, this is how much we spent in claims. This is what we have left over. How much should we invest for future claims and growth? And then the balance of it, they divide to their members and they call it a, sort of a rebate refund. And we got a sizable amount, over $2 million across the state. We received 73,000 of it. And so again, that is available, found money that you could use for this purpose. And I'll tell you, we were, you were, very responsible. Remember, during the budget, you had to make tremendously difficult choices. And we were hopeful that John's predictions would come true, that investments and whatnot would be better than expected. So I would say to you, don't hesitate to fund or, you know, do projects that you think are appropriate because now we know that we have 20 million in the fund balance. We can't go off and spend it carelessly or recklessly. It's going to be another tough year. But understand, we're not under the same pressure, not knowing that we, that we were before. So these amounts, I mean, look at John, we're still doing ARPA. We have 300 in contingency. The board of ed came in and said they have hundreds of thousands. They're building up towards their surplus. So Enfield is in good shape. So I wouldn't hesitate. I mean, do the same level of scrutiny you all do, but I would say, and I know Mike wanted to know what the fund balance was, so he knew that we would be making prudent choices. I know John wanted to know that it's coming from ARPA, not the fund balance. And I just ask for your patience a little bit because, you know, for staffing for me, and I apologize, but, you know, we basically have to throw together an entire council meeting in four or five days. And we try to do it so we can address things that are important and, and be responsive. That little footbridge, we've gotten email, people complaining. I know Ellen did some repairs. So I know how important it is for you to have constituent response to your folks. And I try to do the same thing. We, and just so you know, Mike, too, I had offered, and John, too, and for leadership, and maybe we should have, Friday, Saturday, we were going to do a Zoom meeting. It was Labor Day. Over, perhaps some of your questions could have been answered, Mike. And you know I like to answer things that we can off record. So it just makes things go better. Because we agree on 99% of things, but sometimes when we have these meetings, and I probably gave the same impression that we disagree or we don't get along. I, I get along with all of you. I get along with Mike. I worked through COVID with him. I worked with Bob. I've worked with all of you. And that's why I apologize. I'm not being flipped, but I'm not upset because I've learned, Bob, I think, that we can disagree. We can have a back and forth. Doesn't mean we're not friends, doesn't mean we don't like each other after. But we have spirited debate and we move on because we got a lot of, we got a lot of work to do, ma'am.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Chris. So, oh, yeah. So I, I personally, the, the vehicles, I think are needed desperately. And because the 70,000, we thought we were paying for the sidewalk, which we're not paying for now because it's already funded, and the 70,000 we received from KERMA, I'm going to ask for a friendly amendment to this, that we kick it up to four cruisers and one Sprinter van, which would bring the total cost to 415 instead of the 255. I don't know if you guys are interested, but, I mean, I know at budget time, people wanted to fund all 14 cars. So here's our chance to at least fund four of them, plus the Sprinter van.
And I'll just add, and I understand we're still coming off, you know, we're being very cautious about all of these things. But I'll tell you, it's just funny. I, I don't know, sometimes things just come in ones, twos, threes. But the chief was talking to me today, too, and he told me an interesting story. Cars are, and I'm glad Jeff's on the council because I'm going to ask him to sit with me and the chief and, and come up to sort of decipher the cars. Because it always comes up in every council, well, we have 100, but we really don't because one goes home with the traffic. So I think Jeff could assist me in explaining that. But my, my position would be, I would spend it. I would do a couple of more, only because we didn't do any. And I, I think we need to do it. The chief told me today that one of our officers was in an intersection and his windows were down. He was enjoying the day. And a resident pulled up next to him and he looked at him and he said, that car needs a paint job. It's, it's flaking. It's falling apart. And he just smiled and looked and he said, and we're still at the light. And then he said, and, you know, I do engine repair. That engine's shot. You need a new engine. What's going on in Enfield? Honest to goodness. So I know that we all get confused. We buy a lot, Kenny. We buy 10, and it never seems to be enough, but there is a logic to it. So I would support it. If you don't do it, that's fine. But I feel as though during the budget, I couldn't stand up for many departments as we were making some pretty deep cuts. And these guys like DPW and Highway, they do put their lives on the line. I think they should, we always say at every swearing in, and I said it last week, and John was there because he comes to them all, too, and the mayor, when he's not working. You put your life on the line for us and the least we can do is give you the resources to be protected and to be safe and to come home to your families. And I mean it. And I feel that I didn't live up to that. So I don't feel really upset about most debates or any votes or jousting with Mike a little bit, but I do feel bad that we weren't able to give them the cruisers and I think we should.
Thank you, Chris. Councilman Mangini.
Thank you. Through our merit to Christopher, you and I go back to KERMA and you were here when I vehemently said we shall not back out. And what did we do? We backed out. I would like, through our mayor, through our town manager, back to you, to get a representative from KERMA to visit council at some point. Because I think it's extremely important that council understand the value. I mean, obviously 70 plus thousand dollars is value, but I think council, there's a lot of new members on the council, needs to get a handle on how they operate, why they operate, and the benefit that we have. So I just wanted to share that.
I think that's a great suggestion and we'll, we'll look at special guests coming up.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Councilman Sikala.
Thank you. So I'm going to start my comment by, I was in favor of at least the five in the budget. I'm in favor of adding some in for the chief. So what I'm going to say, I really hope is not taken the wrong way, but I don't think- So what I'm going to say, I really hope is not taken the wrong way, but I don't think we should be adding any more right now, tonight. And to be perfectly honest, just because I want to see that the votes are going to be this unanimous for these next three or four. So we're all gung ho about spending this money now. I'm fine with it, but I'm fine with funding this stuff at the end of the agenda, too. So I don't disagree with giving them more. I am not going to support adding one tonight, right now. I think we have a meeting in two weeks. If everything else passes tonight and we have some money left over, I'm fine with that.
So you're going to hold the police cars hostage for the next three votes?
Shocker that you say crap like that. That is not what I said. Did those words come out of my mouth? That is not what I said at all.
That's the way I heard it, but anyways.
Well, of course, because you hear what you want.
So then let's vote on them tonight, Gina. If you agree with me, why are you waiting till next meeting?
I don't have a problem voting on what we have in front of us. I have a problem adding them.
Councilman Russo.
All right, I'm just trying to play catch up here. So how many cruisers do we actually give the chief for this budget process?
Zero.
Zero. And he asked for?
17.
Seventeen.
And then Chris reduced it to 14. 10 or 14.
And if I'm following the town correctly, the year prior to that, I think we also cut. Does anyone know how many we?
Right, but they were asking for?
And while he's looking up, can I just ask, so what do we do with these cars when they're, we decide that they're no longer patrol ready? Do we move them to administrative divisions with the police department? Do we put them up for auction? You know, maybe that's a question better for the chief of police.
Yes, well, we can give some follow up, Jeff. We've documented that we do all three. And what we've tried to do most recently, we were trying to get rid of the old bombers and go to the smaller electric. We put some stations just because of cost and repairs. But I'll have the chief, I'm sure he's watching, and we'll have all of that in writing tomorrow. But we do use it for command supervision, like the vehicle I told you. And we used to give them to DPW after their useful life with the police department.
So we do a little bit of everything?
Yes.
Depends on what's left of the car.
Right. And I would think that we have some type of operational matrix or fleet plan that we, you know, considers the age of the vehicle, the make of the vehicle, the wear and tear, whether it's a patrol vehicle, condition, all those factors, I would think.
We do.
All right. And are we looking, is the chief looking for Ford Explorers? Is that what he's looking for?
Yeah, he does whatever he currently have online, I believe, are the SUV Ford Explorers. Yes. And the Sprinter van or its similar model.
And we also got to consider for what I understand the turnaround time on these vehicles to outfit them is many, 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 many months. So we fund it now, these cruisers, they probably don't get them till after Christmas.
We've been experiencing about a year. Six, last year, six vehicles were purchased for the police department.
And do we know how many the chief asked for?
I think he asked for 10 last year.
Okay. All right, I appreciate the information. I'm just trying to catch up here.
Is anybody interested in making the amendment?
No, I can't make it.
The mayor entertained a motion to increase to four cruisers at 415, but there was no, no one moved it and no one seconded it.
No one's got them.
So I will make a friendly amendment that we increase the chief's request to three cruisers, four cruisers and one Sprinter van.
For a total of 415.
For a total of 415,000.
Thank you, Marie. Seconded by Councilman Ungeyer. Any more discussions on the amendment?
Just real quick.
Councilman Ludwig.
John, this all come, this will all be out of ARPA money, just want to be clear, right? We're taking it all out of ARPA. I know there's some other fund stuff, but this will all come out of ARPA.
As of right now, there is about 100, take that back. If the remaining budget items on the agenda tonight are approved, there will be about $140,000 left in ARPA funds to be appropriated right now. There are a couple other items there, projects that are finishing up and we'll know better exactly how much we'll have after those are done, but I don't have that information right now.
Yep, thank you.
John, anything?
No.
Okay.
Sheila has a question on the actual appropriated amounts.
Sorry. Was 415 or 450 for the record?
415.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor of the amendment? Opposed? Abstention. So Cindy's out of the room and Gina was an abstention. So nine in favor? Great. Thank you, everyone. And now moving on to the original.
Yeah, we do the main motion.
Yeah, yeah. Moving on to the original. I believe, Mike, did you want to discuss about it all being ARPA funds?
Yeah, I actually just asked John.
It's all set.
All set, yeah, thank you.
Okay, so now we're moving on to the original motion as amended. Any questions? Roll call.
Councilor Sacala.
Four.
Councilor Crissati.
Four.
Councilor Hendrickson.
Four.
Councilor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini has left the room. Councilor Nasuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Councilor Russo.
Four.
Councilor Santinella.
Four.
And Councilor Ungeyer.
Four.
Ten in favor and none against.
Thank you, everyone. So the next is a request for transfer of funds for the Higgins parking lot, lower level lot. The project is $366,214. Be it resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made from Sparkle Street Pump Station Construction Services, 366-214, to Construction Services, 366-214. Date prepared 8/29/24. Prepared by Donald T. Nunes.
Seconded.
And seconded. So this is to repave the lot, the lower lot.
Mr. Mayor, as you know, we've done this over a couple of years, and I know the public appreciates the council's support for the park. It's well-used. When we came back with your inaugural, maybe all of you, eight, nine months ago, we then saw that it was a success and we actually appropriated additional money. But this is one of those projects we cut back again because of the budget. So as you can see, it looks beautiful out there. The bandshell's done. It's been connected. The lighting has gone in. The two buildings next door have all their parking. It's all brand new. What we had envisioned, because it needs to be done, and Donald can elaborate, was to repave the existing parking that we have. As you can see, if you go out there, there are curb cuts, there's new curbs, there's lighting. So they're going to have to go in either way, Four Seasons, and they're going to have to come in and do that close work to seal so nobody falls in the existing lot. Well, one thing, it's not going to be as good. We know that patching doesn't really work well. Number two, the age, we're going to have a brand new parking lot next door. Donald can tell you when we're going to have to start coming in piecemeal to fix the town hall lot. Now, the only reason I'm saying this is I think there was some sentiment when we, you all came back and I came back, when we start a project, let's finish it. Right? Before we go on to a new one, let's try to finish those that we started. And we've been doing that. That's what we're doing here tonight. So I don't mind if you do it or not. I just think it'd be nice to have all the parking done for the next 30 years and not have to come back to town hall. I'll tell you, Four Seasons is an incredible contractor to work with. Donald has worked with them. I'll let you know, they're going to give us, they've already given us this, this 366 to do what they're going to do is really 386. They took off 20 because they know if they pave, they don't have to do the close work around the lights and the curbing. So they gave us that credit already. This is Galasso paving. They did the whole job to date. There were a couple others bidding. Donald and Four Seasons went back to them today. And just in the spirit that they're here, they like working for the town, they would take off another $11,000. So for that amount, currently, Donald, if I'm right, it'd be what, 355? If you take the 11 off what we're asking? And you could have it paved and we'd be good for 30 years. Again, this is all up to you. It's just that like we brought all the stragglers back, including Powder Hollow, all of them. I tried to be fair in bringing them back to address everybody's projects that they have interest in. And these last two are those. So it's up to you. We have the funding. We're going to have to spend it on something. We've well-vetted these projects. I think we should just finish what we start and then we'll move on to new ones in the next budget. Thank you.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to reduce the allocation from 366-214 to 355,000.
Motion.
Motion's made and seconded. Any questions on that? All in favor of the amendment? Opposed? It's unanimous. Okay. Questions on the original amendment as amended? Wow, none. Roll call.
Okay, I'm honestly, I'm not going to support it. And the reason is this. I don't think the parking lot looks that bad. I really don't. I mean, I think the new parking lot looks great, but I don't think the existing parking lot and the upper parking lot look that bad. It's very visible where you have to park. I think the handicap signs are there, the visiting signs are there. You did a great job with signage. In light of the first four things that we voted on, I think we are all very well aware that our infrastructure needs help. I would much rather see this go to something that maybe we don't see, that's underground. We don't know what's going to happen when they go further into the sewer. So I'm going to err on the side of conservative here, and I'm going to be a no on this, Chris.
Yeah, I read the original motion, didn't I? Yeah.
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, so this one's a tough one because I disagree about the lower lot. I mean, when you walk out these doors right here, there's a crack in there that, God forbid, I can't say a lady in heels anymore, so a person in heels steps in that crack, they're breaking their ankle. And I'm saying this crack is two inches wide. All the cutting and trenching and everything they did down there to get the lights down there that we all wanted, you know, they got to patch all that, and it doesn't work. I mean, it is just going to be a giant puzzle down there. So I'm kind of torn on this one. It's a lot of money, but I also wasn't a big fan of Higgins Park to begin with. I came in, once it was under progress, I didn't have the vision. Councilman Ludwig had it, Chris, you had it. I just didn't get it. But let me tell you, I've gone to a couple concerts here and I get it now. You guys had a vision that I didn't have. And it's pretty incredible to see that band show bringing this town together on Tuesday nights and all different people from all over the place. I know people have driven from Bristol here. And it's pretty incredible what you guys accomplished. And I give you credit, Mike, you, you had that vision. And so I'm going to say, let's just finish the project. That's where I'm at. Because it is, before, when we talked about this, it wasn't all cut up like it is now. We didn't have the lights. I didn't know about the islands and everything else that were going in. And I believe Councilman Mangini was the one very concerned about the lighting in the lower parking lot. Well, it's there now and we got to fix it. So instead of patching it together, I'd rather just do the whole thing, be done with it, and it'll, it'll end my lifetime. And again, so Mike, to your credit, Chris, to yours, I think you pulled off a great project there, and I just want to see it home.
And quickly, I was remiss perhaps to address Marie and I'm sure all those concerns. Donald, could you just tell us the condition of the parking lot? And to that point, when you think, if we don't do anything now, when we will have to? Just so we, no, do we have five years left out there, 10, 15? Because I agree, we don't want to spend good money after bad, but in your opinion, what do you think this? I kind of know because that's why we put it in to do it when we did it, but please.
Should be less than five years. So when we do our streets, whatever, we have a minimum of a 20-year design lifestyle. So our lifespan for that pavement, here, we're going to be approaching that 20-year lifespan with that, too. So for the next 20 years or so, again, in the spirit of ARPA, we shouldn't be able to, nobody should have to touch this again for 20 years until that point. So it's going to be rapidly approaching.
Thank you. Councilman Hendrickson.
Well, I did not vote for the 800,000 for the original parking lot, and so I will not be voting for this also. And we talk about infrastructure, pipes going. You say five years on the parking lot. It could be next year, next week on the pipes going down. And we can't flush the toilets that we're concerned about, so I will not be supporting this one. Sorry.
Thank you. Anyone else? Roll call.
Councilor Sacala.
Four.
Councilor Crissati.
Four.
Councilor Hendrickson.
Against.
Councilor Ludwig.
Against.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Nasuda.
Against.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Against.
Councilor Russo.
Against.
Councilor Santinella.
Four.
And Councilor Ungeyer.
Against.
That's five in favor and six against.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll just be thinking before our next meeting, if you could be thinking of some projects, John, we have to, we have to designate that money by December, right?
The money has to be.
Designated.
Encumbered by that point, which means that we basically have to go, if we have a project that needs to go out to bid or something like that, we need to, we need to have the money under contract to be spent.
So we have a couple months, think of it, and we can vet them. And then at very loss, if at the end we can't think of something, this is always a backup.
Okay, moving on. Request for transfer of funds for the removal of existing dugouts and installation of new dugouts at Powder Hollow Park Baseball Diamond, $93,400. I'm not done. So I want to read this one. This project would remove the existing baseball player dugouts at Powder Hollow Park and install new dugouts 12 feet further away from the baseline. It would also involve installing two concrete pads, grade around the new dugouts, replace, repair stone dust and topsoil, blend existing areas together, and provide two dugouts per original plan. original plan. Be it resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made from Sparkle Street Pump Station Construction Services, $93,400, to Powder Hollow Baseball Field Construction Services, $93,400. Day prepared, 8/29/24. Prepared by Donald T. Nunes."
So moved.
Motion is made and seconded. Questions?
I will just tell you, there's no way I'm supporting this, obviously. I think we spent enough money down there, and I, again, infrastructure, this 400,000 or whatever that's going back, that's what I would vote for.
Thank you, Bob. I'm going to, you're going to talk?
Go ahead, Al.
No, I was going to say, I'm going to ask you, because this is, you know, the baseball is your thing, to, you know, sell us on this and...
Well, once again, when you look at the original plans of what we had, and they're right there, proposed in front of everyone, we had the money appropriated originally for this particular project. Over a half million dollars was taken away from the actual project. What they're asking for, and what we're asking for, is just to finish off the field. We're not asking for anything extravagant. The only thing that we're asking for is the removal of those old dugouts. You're going to have a brand-new facility with old structures that are up there. This is something that was approached to me from Corey O'Connell, like, in the second week of August. Ken, you were notified of this. The town manager was notified. We did meet. And then there were further discussions and plans in regard to finishing off that particular area. And to be honest with you, they don't want those dugouts that are there. Once again, they're too small. They're not used for adults. You know, you're going to bang your head. It's really a safety hazard, to be honest with you. So to remove the dugouts and put in what was proposed would be a three-sided fenced area with a roof on it. Nothing extravagant, but to make it look neat and to finish off the particular project. You know, it's like going to the prom or going to, you know, your wedding. And you don't have the, to finish off your makeup or your dress area or whatever. This is something that needs to be finished off for a project to look good. And the bottom line is that we're requested to get rid of the old dugouts and just to insert new dugouts. And I think this is a definite avenue that we could address to make the field finished off. There would be no other extras. They're not asking for batting cages. They're not asking for pitching mounds or anything like that. It's just to finish off the field, to get rid of the old dugouts, and put in two new dugouts, period.
Donald, could you please point to the existing that he's asking to be removed and what to be replaced on the diagram, so people know?
Yeah, because I think that's a good idea, just to help understand or orient everybody where we're referring to. So these rectangles here, this one here, and this one on the third base side, there's the original dugout that is currently there and is in place. The design had the new dugouts that are obviously twice as large of a space on first base and second base side. To retain the existing dugouts, the back part of the backstop fence would stay the same. We would have to change the angle to meet, to come to here, and we would fence off in front just for safety as per protocol. So that would be done in that fashion here. Then after that, it would, we finished off the whole interior, if these were to remain. If, by the will of the council, if this was voted on and it was successful, this red line would disappear, and this would go back to plan, as have this as the line coming across in front of those dugouts. And also, this line would be moved back to, through here. So that's, again, these are the original existing here and here, and these are the new proposed here and there.
You all set, Bob?
Yes, I am.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
So it's not a secret. I'm against our kids not playing at the Enfield High School. I know I'm the bad guy here. I'm the sole person here who feels that kids should play in their own school. So I'm not going to say yes to this. I guess I'm a little annoyed, too, that the athletic director said that he had a problem busing kids this year. And we have somebody sitting up here whose daughter's game was canceled because there wasn't a bus tonight that could bus them. But we have money to put into dugouts. If the athletic department would like dugouts, then maybe it should come from the Board of Ed money. Maybe he needs to go to the Board of Ed. Because I'm not putting any money forth here. The fields were supposed to be started. I was the lone no vote up here that said no to that. They aren't done. They haven't been started. They're not done. They're not going to start now until the spring. I will not put another dime into anything that is not going to put our kids playing at the high school. That's the way I feel, and I'm not changing my mind.
Councilman Russo.
All right. When I was on that side, the end of last year, I sat at the table right here where Donald's at, and, you know, I fully supported the high school varsity team moving over to Powder Hollow. It gave, released some of the congestion over at Enfield High School, especially for rectangular fields. There were huge safety issues over at Project Hollow, I'm sorry, Powder Hollow. There was also, you know, they didn't have a fence at Enfield High School. They had a fence over there. They had a place to play. We put 1.1 million into making it safe and playable. I fully supported that. For me, dugouts, I think it's more of a want as opposed to an immediate need. You know, I know it comes from different sources and different budgets and money, but, you know, how do you tell kids? Like, there's kids right now that are sitting home that aren't playing freshman sports, that aren't playing middle school sports. They don't, they can't play at all. That was a decision that was just made, and that's very raw. So for me to support this and support doing dugouts, I'd like to see, you know, the money spent somewhere else. And I get it, it's the Board of Ed. The Board of Ed made the decision. There's also, programs are being cut at the high school, from what I understand. There's also staffing issues. There's concerns there. There's also some immediate needs at other facilities within the town. Immediate needs that I see at other athletic facilities that I would say are safety issues that we really should be doing prior to doing dugouts. So it pains me to say this, but I just think it's, right now, it's a bridge too far. I'm not saying never. I'm not saying I won't support it, never, ever. But I think at this time, I just don't, I don't think it's money well-spent. I don't think it's wise to do. Thank you.
Councilman Santinella.
So, you know, it's hard for us to sit here and not just be infuriated by some of this discussion, right? We don't have sports at the schools because you cut their budget. Kids don't have buses because you cut their budget. And now, yes, you did.
Point of order.
Excuse me, I have the floor. You do not interrupt me.
Point of order.
No, I'm sorry. This is, that's completely unheard, that's completely uncalled for. And, you know, really, and now, and now you just, there is this insistence that they're going to play at the high school when we have 100 reasons why that's not possible. And everybody else in our district who we play against, none of them play at their school. But yet, because you think that that's where they should play, then are you going to wave a magic wand? So again, it's just another continuation of not funding the community when it comes to doing things for our kids. And you know what? We're just, it's fine. Just vote.
Okay. Well, you all know me. I'll leave it on that note. Not playing at the high school? How are the kids going to get to Powder Hollow, John? Because you didn't address the question about, they canceled the soccer game tonight because there's no busing from the schools.
There's not staff.
Excuse me, Gina, I have the floor. Next, okay? We never cut the Board of Education one cent this year, John, did we? Correct yourself. They got a 2% increase plus $1 million in security, plus 5.9 million for money that they spent under your leadership that they didn't have. Okay? So if you want to be clear, be clear. So we didn't cut the Board of Ed budget, but yet they can't bus our kids to their games. What's going on? That's the real story. And that's what she's worried about, because we have a council member sitting here whose daughter could not play her first game because our schools couldn't get her there. That's an embarrassment. So yes, now I agree. We're ready to vote. Because I had things, and I had a different opinion on this. But you want to play politics?
Oh, what are you going to do? Hold the kids hostage? Is that what you're doing?
Point of order, Gina, you like saying it. Councilman Mangini.
Okay, boys and girls, let's all play nice in the sandbox.
Oh, that shit is...
This, yeah, the Shepeth Hills, you're right. I am extremely embarrassed and disappointed. I am the longest-serving member of this Enfield Town Council. Never have I experienced any of this horse crap. This one fighting with this one and that one fighting with, no. It's going to stop. I don't know how, but it's going to stop. We are each all entitled to our opinions, yes, but we need to be respectful of each other. And that is now what's happening. I will have none of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Mangini. Anyone else? Councilman Crisati.
Yep. The only thing that, my last comment on this. We're talking about finishing off projects. And if we can't finish off a project, once again, we're not going to be finishing anything in this town. Nobody's going to want to do any type of business in here. I'm sorry. This is absolutely ridiculous. If you vote no, let me tell you, there's going to be a lot of people down your backs.
So, Bob, I went to Powder Hollow today, and I'm really, really, really trying to justify this. I really am. And you know that. And John, you know that. My biggest problem, other than tonight, because I do agree with Councilman Mangini, is we spent millions on Beautiful High School, and the kids destroyed it. They ripped the stuff right out of the sheet rock. And, you know, they're kids. Kids will be kids. I've never been to Powder Hollow dugouts before. I've seen them from afar, but I never walked up to them. And when I saw that they were made 100% out of concrete, not cinder blocks, this is stand-up concrete, they ain't going anywhere. You can't burn them to the ground. You can't do anything. Do they look like prison cells? Absolutely, 100% they do. And it's kind of embarrassing the way they look. The fences are all stretched out. And so I guess, I don't think there's support here tonight to get it. I think it's going to be a 5-6 vote. But what if we were to try to get either one of the high school art classes to go down, and let's make them look something proud? Let's paint them. You know, there's graffiti all on them, which we're not going to stop. We all know that. I understand, Gina, but it's something to make them look better than what they do now. Because, Bob, I can see where you say it's an embarrassment. Because it is. It's like you're going into prison cells. Solid concrete that is still gray concrete, never painted, and you got chain-link fence in front of you. You know, unfortunately, that's what our schools are starting to look like. So I'm trying to come up with a compromise that maybe if we could put new bleachers inside, or whatever you call it, a bench inside it, either stretch the chain or replace the chain, get some paint down there. Is the baseball team, the Enfield Eagles? You know, put, you know, a mural up on the wall and do something similar with the guest one, for now. You know, it won't cost us 92,000, and I just want to keep going, Bob. The reason I'm involved in this with you is because Corey did send us an email. But Corey also said he was going to fundraise to pay for this. You and I had a meeting about it, and, you know, if it didn't cost us anything, why wouldn't we do it? I know Enfield Soccer did a lot of fundraising. They want to expand their parking lot. You know, they're putting their butt on the line to do things. Well, that was great, and I went with you, and we had meetings about it. And then when I said, well, before we go to council, we need to know how much money Corey's got, and he comes back with, well, I can't raise that. I can't raise any money right now. And, well, that's a whole different story than, you know, they're going to pay for this, and it's not going to cost the taxpayers. So, you know, it's been a back and forth. I think the vote's going to lose tonight, and I'm trying to come up with something that's going to make them look better, Bob. And I'm, before we vote, what can we, $10,000 for paint and new chain-link fence and new benches inside? Something so it doesn't fail? Gina's had her hand up. So that's where I'm at right now. I'm trying to save something because you're not going to get everything. Councilman Sacala.
So respectfully, I appreciate what you're trying to do. You're putting lipstick on a pig. And quite frankly, throwing $10,000 to try to pretend it's not junk and looks bad is kind of insulting. It really is. And I don't know that you're trying to be insulting, but it is. This is now the second time this is going to fail. And to be honest, it's pretty embarrassing. I don't know why it's on the agenda, if there's not enough votes for it. It's baffling to me, holding, if you're upset that other facilities need things, or that you want kids to play at Enfield High, what you're doing is holding this last piece of a project that actually doesn't even complete the project like we originally asked, but it gets it to another, back to a more appropriate level. I'm just, you know what? I feel like I'm banging my head against the wall. Just vote, table it, whatever. Just let's go home.
Go ahead, Bob.
Yep. You know, I get it. You know, I'm sure painting those cement dugout is not really the issue. The issue is that the dugouts are really not usable. First of all, if you go in there and stand up, you're going to be banging your head on the dugout.
I didn't have any problem with that. I didn't have any problem with that. And I'm 5'9".
John Santinella.
Yeah. But, you know, you have quite a few, you know, these high school kids, they're, you know, 6'1", 6'2". You know, you have kids that are even taller than that. And, you know, the request was to remove the dugouts just to make it look neater. And that's really the big ask. You know, if we could even just remove the dugouts, maybe they can devise a way to make the area look neater, even if we just put trap rock down there once the dugouts are out. I don't know. That's, you know, something that, you know, Four Seasons would have to, you know, with Donald to talk about. I mean, that's the only other thing that I would suggest, you know? But just to make it look neater than what it does. You're going to have a beautiful field down there, and you're going to have two prison-looking things that just wouldn't finish off the particular project. That's my last pitch on it. And, you know, once again, you're going to have a beautiful field. Just finish off that one section. That's it.
Thank you. Yeah. Councilman Hendrickson.
Bob, I appreciate that comment. And I did go down to the field with you that one time to look at it. And I agree, the dugouts are horrible. What was the breakdown of just removing the dugouts?
It was a safety hazard.
That was not provided. It was all in one, because again, those, to Mayor Nelson's point, those were built out of basically poured foundation walls, like you're going to do a home foundation, like you're building a brand-new house that has a regular foundation to it, and also those poured walls onto it, so it's a little more in-depth. It's not slab-on-grade. It's not something we could just kind of easily push over. So it's going to require some work to get, take it down, but then also get disposed of it, and also change up the irrigation system and all the other things around it to patch it in.
Right. But that was part of the 93-4.
Correct. I don't know how it is broken down. It was a lump-sum price to provide the concrete, provide all that.
Okay. So I would be in favor, if you want to table that and get that figured, to me? Because I believe the dugouts are an eyesore there, so I have no problem with trying to come up with a number on to remove those, because they are hideous-looking. I agree. Trying to work a little bit with this, that's all. And I appreciate Bob coming back with that.
Do we want to entertain a motion to table it?
I'd like to make a motion to table this item.
I'll second it.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor of tabling the item? Opposed? Two abstentions? Okay. Nine in favor, two against.
And Donald will get that information, and we'll provide it to you before the next meeting.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All in favor?